Okay, we're gonna call this back into session. We are on, we're gonna reconvene in open session. We are on one E, Pledge of Allegiance. We stand for the pledge, or do whatever you want for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands under our administration.
Alrighty. We are at one F. And did you bring up the beliefs by any chance? Did you hand out the beliefs?
Um, it's in board docs. It's right here.
Mine coming up. Here, you can read it here. Children are valued. No, I have to read, I have to read the first part of it. As part of the greater Glendale River Hills community, this school district will lead in creating a supportive learning environment to inspire all students to strive for excellence in pursuing a strong academic foundation to succeed in and contribute to the global community. We believe children are valued.
A safe environment with respectful, responsible, and prepared individuals increases the potential for learning success.
Education benefits the individual and society.
Each person has the right to be treated with dignity as an effect.
We believe education is shared responsibility, home, school, and...
Okay, thank you. Uh, one...
You do the bold ones?
No, that's, we only do half of them at a time, but we can do it. We believe change is an opportunity for growth. We usually only do half of them.
Each individual has unique potential to learn.
High expectations, effort, and motivation are essential to learning.
Cooperation, communication, and collaboration strengthen our home, school, and community.
We believe diversity is an asset.
Okay, one G, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Danielle Bailey, second by Ben Wen. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero. On, we're on a roll. Two A, executive summary.
Alright, so there are three items in the superintendent's report. The first one is regarding the family survey results. At the last board meeting, there was discussion on whether or not to ask Donovan Group to provide the board with the raw data or comments from the family satisfaction survey. What the firm usually does is takes the comments, and if anything shows up more than once, then they would call it as a theme. So we were given the themes, but not the raw comments. Uh, the final report was reported in December and was asked to bring it back to this board meeting so that you guys could vote on whether or not you wanted the raw data. As a side note, it came to my attention on Friday when we released the family, or the staff survey. Um, I was approached by a staff member who said that it was the last board meeting, and because of some past practice, um, where the survey was said to be anonymous, and then it wasn't, and the comments were used to identify people and have discussions with people, um, they shared with me that they would not be doing the survey, and that there were several staff that would not do the survey.
Which survey?
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The staff survey. So they had seen the last board meeting and saw the discussion, and came to me on Friday and said, "I just want to make you aware that we will not be completing the staff survey until we determine whether or not the board and administrative team will be receiving the raw comments." So I just wanted to share that.
Hold on, yeah, we will. So in regards to what Allison said, I do not want to say yes or no, or if it was done, but there was allegations previously that was targets of administrating, administrators going after teachers and, um, other administrators when they were honest in these, these things. That did actually happen, you know, that they felt that way. I don't know if it was purposely done or not. I'm not saying that. It's just that it was really understood that it may have happened.
Was it a particular survey?
It was a...
Recently, like, how would administrators? I'm trying to understand how someone besides, like, what survey and who would have...
So it was a, it was a, uh, if I recall correctly, it was a regular staff survey, um, to, um, talk about administrator, administration, how is the school, how do you feel? It was a regular staff survey.
A long time ago?
It wasn't.
He had a survey. I don't know if that's the one that we're talking about.
I'm not sure. They just said in the past.
So before our, before many of our time...
Allison, and I...
Pre...
Pre you by maybe one year.
Part of this board.
It was a 2019 survey. We had a morale survey. Really, um, pushed to get done.
Okay.
Frankly, not enough was done with it, uh, because the, the next year was the pandemic, and...
Okay.
Excuses were made, and I'm not pointing a finger at anyone. I'm not pointing it at myself. But the reality of it is, um, that there was a lot of information, and it was a good survey, but if someone... Yeah.
And was it administered by a third party?
School perceptions, I believe.
One at a time, please.
No, I believe it was school perceptions at the time, and I was trying to find it, uh, as well. And honestly, it was very good. There was a lot of information to it. There were a lot of people writing a lot of things to it. There were just a great deal of information, and there was a lot of problems on the follow through. So the fact that, and I don't know who in...
It doesn't, it doesn't matter who. I do remember this.
Okay.
Andy, and I, I do remember getting the calls and the, the emails. I do not believe, I think we can still get our information that we need without, um, having to see every con, because what happened was, what the allegation was, is that they read the comment, they, even though it was anonymous, because of a particular thing that happened, like, if they gave an example, you could kind of figure out which, which person did it, which T, and, uh, they felt uncomfortable in the situation where they, they were retaliating, or talked to, or saying, "Why are you doing, this is not true," making their truth not true because their, and it was their truth. Whatever it is, good, bad, indifference, it was the teacher's truth, or the administrator's truth, and made to, like, take back what they said, or something like that. So that is, that is actually something that happened.
Okay.
I think we can still, and one other thing, I still think we, for me personally, I think we can get what we need to get without having the comments and the raw data.
Can I ask a...
Go ahead, Danielle.
Procedureal question. So, we're doing the executive summary right now. Are you gonna run us through this whole report before we move into discussion on family survey results?
No.
Are we utilizing the...
Okay.
So we're currently talking about the family survey and going to, okay, great. That's what I wanted to clarify.
It's a different thing. Go ahead.
So, I'm asking questions about the raw data thing. Okay. So, so I'm, again, just trying to understand the scope of what we're talking about. Wrap my head around it. If, if there's a decision made that the board doesn't get the raw data, do you still have access to it?
No, and I think that's a big part of, but the, the trust, that trust, is that they know I don't have it either.
So if we say we're gonna get the raw data, we get it through you, and you have access to it? Or is the theory that only the five of us would have it?
No, the theory is none of us have it.
No, no, no. If, let's say, let's say hypothetically, we vote to give ourselves the raw data. Is it only the five of us who have it?
We could...
And no one else?
Yeah, I just work with Perry. I don't think that would...
That's not gonna...
Protect the trust.
It's not gonna...
No, no, I'm just...
Hold on, finish, Carla.
I'm just trying to understand. So we, we hypothetically, we could vote to give the data only to ourselves with a technical and hypothetically enforceable promise that we will maintain confidentiality, each of us individually, and that we would never disclose anything that's in, in the information we receive. So hypothetically, we could set that up, and then it's a question of whether we trust ourselves to honor that agreement, right?
I just said maybe on that because of open records.
Well, see, so that's my next question. If we get the data, then it's subject to open records, right? So hypothetically, then, even though we make a promise not to disclose, anyone can come ask for it.
I don't know that. I'm just saying that could be, and that's something that we probably should ask our attorneys for, but, um...
So, if we get the raw data, effectively, everyone gets the raw data?
No, no. Not, depends on, right, it depends on what they request. And here's the, the kicker of this. If hypothetically, if we got the data, we would get it, say, take open records out, just say we would get it, and that would be the end of it. She, uh, Allison, or I gotta start calling you by your name, Superintendent Weiss will not be, uh, be getting it, nor any of the administrators. It would prob, what would probably happen, it was come to, through me, it'll come to me, and I, I give everybody their, their copy of it. That could be hypothetical. Are you done?
No, I, so one more question. So let's assume we vote, then, not to give ourselves the raw data. What, what are the limits in your mind on how we have a back and forth with the consultant? If we have follow-up questions to whatever he does give us? Does that ha, happen only in open session? How do we dig further, for instance, into the report he gives us? I, I know we got a report from him, but you know, you sit in noodle, and you think, "Oh, you know, I got this new question." Do we have access to the consultant to follow up?
I would, I'm gonna step in. I would say that, that is, um, you send an email to, um, Allison, and Allison will direct the question.
I could ask additional questions.
So that would be the process, would be that trap door? And would that be something? Yeah, so that's, I'm just, you know, it seems to me, one option is we get the raw data, and then it's a free-for-all, and trust issues, and blah, blah, blah. We don't get the raw data, and then the trust issue is on us, right? Are we able to dig to get meaning out of this survey without access to detail except filtered through the...
And I would say, and I don't know...
The consultant and you.
You can let me know, Tamika, if you agree with this or not. If, let's say there was, like, a huge amount of questions, I don't see why we couldn't say we're gonna schedule a work session and have Perry come back in, because there were, like, twenty more questions.
But that would be also in an open meeting.
Right, yeah, right, right.
Okay.
Are you done?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, Ben?
Okay.
Before Ben.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, okay, one thing was Perry talked about being able to de-identify the data, and Perry is well aware of the, um, possibility of having situations that would, that would then sort of give you clues to figure out who people are. So he seemed confident he could do that. The, um, and I think where we could get around open records possibly to truly protect anonymity might be to just set up a follow-up with Perry where he has a presentation but doesn't actually hand over the raw data to us. Like, I don't know exactly how that would work, but if it's a, if there's a concern that anonymity would be broken by the public, then perhaps that would be a way to do it. I don't know that if you're gonna just ask Perry questions, if you're gonna actually be able to dig deeper than his themes and his opinion, which...
So his themes are based on any comment that showed up more than once? So it wasn't just like his opinion of, like, what's important, what's not important?
To me, it's just a little bit more of like a philosophical question to think about in terms of, like, we do all these surveys, if we don't get to see the raw data and interpret it for ourselves, we're left to have somebody else constantly interpret the data for us. Like, the DAP survey's coming up, and I, I want to talk about the data for that, too.
And to the first part, I mentioned that to the person that I had the conversation with. I said, "Well, in the meeting, we talked about how we could make it, and it was just, nope, I don't trust."
Well, that's their choice. That's everybody's choice.
Okay, wait, 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 wait.
I'm done.
All right. Um, so hold on a second. I'm gonna, Ben, speak, and then I will.
So my quick question here, and we kind of touched on it, but, one, what is the purpose of us having this data? Because he already gave us a summary. And two, is that purpose that we come up with, is that actually going to help us improve school outcomes? Or are the themes good enough, and we can just move on from it with the themes?
God, I told you to talk, because that's kind of what I was gonna do. Look, um, I'm, I'm gonna say this, and it can be harsh or not. As board members, we're not experts. We are elected officials who happen to want to run and serve our community, but not one of us are really an expert in a field of getting data, or, oh, maybe you are, but, but do you understand my point? At some point, we have hired all these people, we hired consultants. I have seen both ways, where we blindly, like, trusted everything the superintendent said, and we got burned at, in certain things. And then I've seen it where we're gonna overreach. If we are trying to get the full, I remember a couple of surveys ago where we didn't have quite enough people. I, I don't remember, and I remember, Carla, you were one of the people that, that noticed that so many people didn't do this survey, and it was only, like, forty people out of ninety, or something like that. But if they don't do the survey, or if they don't feel comfortable doing the survey, it's still a moot point, because we're only getting the information from certain people, and some people won't even talk, and those are the ones that you probably need to talk, because if they are really concerned about this, they might have something relevant to say. And they might have something that we need to know to help our, our, our district, but they will shut up if they feel like they're being retaliated. I don't think, this is, for me, and this is me alone, this is not something that, I want everybody to feel comfortable doing that. And we have to build that trust again, which it wasn't any of us doing, or we didn't do it, but we, and it wasn't the superintendent. Andy and I was on the board, but we didn't know what was going on until after the fact. But it's twofold. We need to figure out how to be a governing body, but also let, if we hire these experts, to let them do their jobs.
Well, what are they recommending, then?
Well, who wanted the data?
Yeah.
Andy.
So just real quick, yeah, who, so personally, I don't, I don't need the data, but...
I can't remember.
If someone does, can you, like...
Andy brought it up.
Just so that we're clear, right? So there are a couple of different issues. One is, I really feel very strongly that, uh, we ought to have, uh, access to entreat confidentially, to the greatest extent, whatever that information is. But I do understand, though, especially now, that there's issues with that confidentiality being maintained. That didn't, I'm, I, I don't know who was, but I'd be surprised if it was anyone on the board, um, who didn't respect that, because the board wanted that survey. Regardless, it's inflation. As to, you know, what you do with the information, what I don't like doing is playing a game of, let's see what we can get, uh, to hide from the public. I don't want to not collect information. It, it's a difficult choice. I don't want to not collect information that we need, and I also want to structure something so that we can play the, who's the, uh, you know, the caretaker of the information game. As it is, that survey in 2019, when we took that survey in 2019, uh, when we did it, rather, you know, there was a question, and, uh, I think we ended up releasing the objective scores, we didn't release the comments, because we were concerned that the comments, uh, were going to, you know, be potentially identifiable, um, and we never had any issue with that, but doesn't deal with the specific issue that...
But it was, they were, it wasn't released, but it was released to a point that the...
At least to us, but, a, and by us.
And some administrators.
Yes.
Some administrators. So do you still want, like, do you still feel, I'm just curious, because I, I'm not, I don't feel extremely strong one way or the other on this particular, yeah, survey.
If we're doing this as a tool for you, and I guess this is the other way, so it's a tool for the board, you know, that's also a different issue, too.
I don't think...
I'll go along with the majority on this one. I mean, I, I just, I don't think that the clear can answer, and maybe like what you were saying, maybe, you know, we tried it one way before, let's try it another way and see what we can do to maximize, you know, the most people coming, uh, to us with, you know, with answers.
Say one last thing?
Danielle?
My understanding is that, well, we, I asked, we asked for this to come back as a communications, uh, committee topic, and to talk about sort of what plans, and my ask was just for, like, a candid analysis from our administrators about, how are you receiving this information? How are you, like, you know, how are you processing it, and how's that gonna translate into action steps? So I would suggest that we c, continue on that path without the raw data for the moment, and if that, if we end up hitting a brick wall, and it's like, "Oh, that, that's not at all," you know, there's, there's discord amongst what board members, or stakeholders, or administrators feel about that survey, then I would say we could revisit seeing this particular data, and in what way we might do that, but I'm comfortable just sort of forging ahead without it for now.
I agree with Danielle. If there's a purpose or need, then we should revisit.
Go ahead.
So I, I think that, that leaves it open-ended enough that you're gonna have some people who are gonna bow out of, like, the teacher surveys, if we're saying we might come back, and we might want the raw data. So the issue is, so the decision here on this family survey has an impact on participation in the, the staff survey. Right? So that's, that's my understanding now, after some conversations I've had, is, a, and, I mean, I'm still processing this. There are some people who are not gonna take the staff survey because of what happened back in 2019.
Okay.
Because of the way that data was, from what I have heard, I wasn't part of that, that journey or that story, data that was not supposed to get into the hands of certain administrators did, uh, narrative data, and allowed them to identify particular people and follow up on it. So there's that fear that that's gonna happen. For people who lived that experience and are afraid of that, I don't know that any decision we make is gonna bring them back to the survey.
Yeah.
Right? But there might be people who are saying, you know, "I just want to know, this is gonna remain anonymous, and if we're keeping it open-ended, we might lose some people." I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't, I am on, I just don't know what the right thing is to do.
So couldn't we, like, let's say we're gonna do a staff survey, we have to approve it, couldn't we, in the approval, say, "This is not gonna, we're not gonna just aggregate the data, we're not gonna..."
So, point of order. I'm gonna bring it back to this particular one.
It's already open.
Um, I'm just gonna bring it back to this particular one.
Yeah.
Um, the discussion is for this...
Yeah, but that, your survey has ramification of this decision.
Even though, but we can't discuss, we're discussing just this, and if we're gonna get the raw data, we, we've decided what we, we have to decide one way or the other, and yes, it can be ramifications, but that is not part of the discussion. It's if we are going to get raw data or not. The reason why we don't want it, or we do want it, that is a discussion, but it can't be because...
Why not?
Because it's not noticed. It, this is only, it only is for this particular thing.
Right, we're not making a decision on the teacher survey. My, and that's not, I'm not suggesting that we do. I'm just saying that if, I, I think it would be beneficial to make a firm decision tonight.
I...
You know?
So I was...
Just so people know what's coming.
It just seems like, uh, my, my brain thoughts are going with Ben and, and Carla, because they keep saying it before us, but I really believe that we have to have a firm, you know, we, we're gonna, we gotta trust, I, I, you, we expect that the teachers to trust us, to come to us when things are bad, but we don't trust, you know, we don't trust them to do that, so we have to see their comments, we have to see it. If, I guess, i, it's, it's a, a twofold. We have to build, this board has to build trust, um, among the community, and the superintendent has to build trust among the staff, and it, because of things that have happened in the past, we have to build it. It's not gonna take a year, it's not gonna, it might take one or two, three years to build that, but if we show that we are trying to do what's best for the district, and we are not trying to, to get a, a gotcha moment. So, um, I'm gonna make a motion, because I'm gonna make the motion to not, um, get the raw data.
Second.
It's moved by Tamika, second by Ben. Discussion? Wait, audience, do you have anything to say? Does anybody have anything to say on the Zoom? Because I forget the people are on the Zoom.
Let's see, are there twelve people on the Zoom? Jean Pirilas Strauss, goes first.
Jean has raised her hand.
Where did you see twelve people?
On the bottom.
Oh, there it is.
Can you hear me?
Yes. This is working.
Hi there!
This is cool.
Go ahead, Jean.
Uh...
Um, wait, can you still, can you say your name?
Yes.
Your address? Thank you. You should know that.
My name is, my name is Jean Pirilas Strauss. I live at seven two three seven North Wayside Drive in Glendale. A proud Glendale resident since nineteen ninety-one, and former Glendale River Hills school board member. Uh, I have, I, as part of my retirement, want to get, be just more aware of what's going on in our district, which I'm very happy to be listening to, and I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that all of you have with regard to the teacher information, and, uh, I think that, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement that you should be looking at the information in totality, and that, the details, and you do need to trust the experts. You all bring something to this board, that's why you were elected. However, you need to build the trust within the community of the district, and I, I think that, that I'm, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other hands raised? Okay, board discussion. I'm gonna, no more discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor not to get the raw data? Not to get the raw data. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. Karen, can you, Karen, can you, uh, roll call?
Andrew Fabel for Glendale.
I, all in favor not?
You're saying you're not gonna get the raw data?
Correct.
Aye. Right?
Has, uh, proposed and discussed here, and I'll go aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
That feels weird.
Five to zero. We will not be getting the raw data. Thank you. Next item, go ahead, superintendent.
All right, family calendars. So the twenty-three, twenty-four family calendar, so this is just holidays, um, was approved last year, but I'm just bringing it back for information because the staff voted, um, to keep parent teacher conferences in November, so I'm gonna add those days to the calendar when we post it, so that families have those days off, too, so that they just have the totality of days that were, um, that are non-student days for twenty-two, twenty-three. And then the other piece, just as a side note, is, um, the admin teams talked about different ways we can make sure that we have something built in for teachers to communicate with families at that halfway point, since conferences are gonna be later again, like, if it's, it might look like progress reports at the middle school, it might look like some way to have, um, teachers reach out, but just to make sure that no families show up to conferences and get information that's a surprise, because we're talking about November. So that was something that we talked about. So really, the approval that I'm bringing is for the twenty-four, twenty-five draft family calendar, and that was just work, I worked in collaboration with our partner districts to ensure that we have the same first day of school, the same, um, holiday break, the same Easter break. So really, that's all that's in there. And then I did put in conferences again for November, but, you know, if something tra, dramatic doesn't happen next year where people change their minds, just to have that in there again, so families can see it. And then the other piece is just ensuring, because I know that that twenty-three, twenty-four was approved last year, but then I don't know if it was posted, so we'll just make sure that upon approval, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five are on the website now, so that families can see the next couple of years. Um, the biggest for twenty-four, twenty-five is that everyone will be, teachers will be very happy, because it's a two-week holiday break, and it happens like every seven years or something, where it just falls, so that the holiday break is two-fold.
I saw that.
So, um, so that's a nice plus. Um, one of the Jewish holidays is on a weekend, so we gain a day back there. Um, we'll have some further discussion around the October Jewish holiday, but the third is the, um, observed day, and so we'll have some conversation around, do we have that Friday off as well? Do we have people back on Friday? Maybe do professional development that Friday? So that'll have to be further discussion, because it is that Thursday. And then, spring break is something that everybody, all the districts in our quadrant are trying to align, so that we all have the same spring break, and we've actually aligned twenty-four, twenty-five and talked about looking ahead, so that it's always so that it's always a certain week in March and that we're all consistent. So those are some of the conversations, but really this is just first day of school, last day of school and holidays for 2425.
Okay, I think we have a, I gotta go back to it.
So the motion is just to approve the 2425.
To approve it.
Today's schedule.
Do we have a motion to approve the family how, or calendar 2320, 2324 and 2425?
So moved.
Moved by Ben Nguyen, seconded by Tamika Vukovich. Discussion. Discussion in the, on the Zoom. Discussion on board. Go ahead, I saw Danielle's hand.
I can go first.
Oh, just technical question for me.
I called on you, Danielle, go!
Okay, one is a comment. I saw some community folks talking about how the PD days for this calendar are not listed on the left side of the column. They're just color-coded. Something to think about. I don't know if it's.
Two, but they're right here.
Color-coded.
But if there's a key too.
I understand. It's a key, but it, it's a key. It's just, I don't know if it's difficult or not, it's just something to consider adding them or listing the PD days in a separate box. I don't know.
Okay. It would just, you would have to add every single one in here on the list.
Did you do like a separate box that just has the PD days that's like smaller?
Possibly. It's just a thought. I don't know. I don't know.
Anyway, my other just question is you mentioned that the PD days would be added after you do a survey. So you want to survey families about the one day a month. What's the, what are you, what are you looking at, what might change based on the survey?
I was planning on bringing to the board either next month or the month after, just circling back to the conversation we had around the one day a month versus the every other day early release versus the early release. Because some of the feedback I've ironically gotten from some families this year is we don't necessarily like the one day a month. And so we had some other options. So I was going to bring back to the board the possibility of surveying the families on like all those options.
Are you surveying staff as well?
Um, yeah, most likely. Yeah, did I put that in here?
I, I thought you did because I would want to know how they're liking.
Yeah, absolutely. If I didn't, I meant to, sorry.
I think you did. That's why I just wanted to clarify. So that's not.
Back again to like present to you guys like possible options.
The process is asking the board to approve the survey, then giving the survey and processing the survey.
Okay, but we're talking about the calendar.
Well, because I'm asking when the PD days, when she anticipates the PD days being added to the 2324 calendar.
So I'd like to do that before school's out. So that I always have all those, but yeah.
Okay.
That would be the process.
Okay, thanks.
Who was it?
Me.
Okay, go ahead. As I second Danielle's thing about the colors. I'm always confused by this. I'm always hunting for the PDs because they're not a color. So I guess if you were going to be architecturally consistent, you would have a third color equals no school for students, PD.
Well, she has a color for PD. The, the dates are just not listed.
So we did actually differentiate.
Are they?
This time, which wasn't in the past.
Ah, okay, okay, it wasn't.
Okay. We did change it to no school for students, district days.
Okay.
No school for students, holidays, but that's new.
Okay.
We also potentially list those dates underneath there, like the actual like.
And if you print this out and you don't have a color printer, you won't know either way, so let's keep going.
But if they, if it's discolored, that tells me there's no schools. I would like every day that I don't have schools to be discolored, no matter what the color it is.
What if the calendar was a magnet that you could put on your fridge?
Wouldn't that be amazing?
It would be, which is a cost.
Okay, so then, so then I have a technical question. Because I, this is my first round with calendars. This is a vote on the draft of this 2425 calendar. But when does it become fixed? Like, does it ever become fixed or?
So I would say once we get those professional development days and then.
And then if you need to change it, you come back to the board and ask for a vote to modify it.
Okay. All right. This, this one is always kind of when they get together, they decide within the districts, the four communities, how, just to make sure that we're not, kids are, are doing what they need to do or the families are allowed to do what they need to do. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
Ben already motioned.
Oh, we, we're already a second. Now, sorry. All in favor of approving the family calendars for 2023, 2024 and 2024, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. Abstention, five to zero, approved. Two D.
Cow at the request in the last meeting. So I know that we talked about discussing this more as we work through board governance policies, but there was a request to add it to the agenda. So I added the committee of the whole discussion to as item two D.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a twofold. We're going to decide how we're going to do this in policy when we do the policy. So, because we'll have policy. I am, now that I, and I'm going to give a little statement. I have went back and asked past board members, past presidents, eight of them altogether. Why, what was the purpose of committee of the whole? Why did you choose not to have committee of whole, different things like that? First of all, committee of the whole did not start until Andy's presidency. That was the first time that anybody remembered committee of the whole. Community, uh, committee of the whole was needed at the time because we were going through pandemic. We were going through a couple of things and we, it was all connected. In my opinion, this is my opinion, the reason we need to stay in committees and this is the purpose, and it's, I guess it was universally said with, among all the other people that I talked to. You become, it goes back to becoming an expert at one particular thing. I go back to, I have been on buildings and grounds for the whole time I've been here. I have historical knowledge of buildings and ground. And we usually swipe out other people so they can get a taste of buildings and grounds. But yet, there's an expertise there, same way with, with policy. Next year I plan on not asking for policy because I've been on policy for a few years. Somebody else needs to do policy. And then, you know, Danielle will probably stay on because now she has become the expert at policy and somebody else, you know, because she's had a year or two, she can, that's kind of how it's supposed to work. And you're always supposed to shift one, but you're going to deep dive into this. And if you do your homework and you do what you need to do, I am trusting my board members to ask those questions. I am trusting, I, I know you're in communication, so I don't really have a lot of questions because I know Danielle is going to ask the questions in committee. If we do finance, I'm, I know, and the personnel, I know Ben is going to ask those questions and, and personnel and finance when it comes to that. So I, and then also having the expertise of the people that we have hired as part of that. Lindsay as buildings and grounds, usually Allison is in policy. Karen in, and Jenica are in communications. Personnel and finances, Lindsay as well, we have our experts there. Lastly, our committee of the whole meetings lasted two to three hours and those were good ones. Our school board meetings last about two hours. That is five hours. When you look at a, a committee, because it's some, one of the things that was said that it will cut your time down. Committee meetings usually last an hour plus the two hours we have for school board. You have four hours compared to five or six hours. Our buildings and ground meeting was how long last week? 15, 20 minutes? Yeah. And it was informational, we got what we needed and it was done. And so that is my reasoning behind not going to committee of the hall. There is still precedent that the, the board president still makes that decision. And I would refer to you guys not looking at me, but looking at if you were on the committee or if you were the president or you were the president, making that decision, what is best? You see what's best for the board. That is, that is key. If you're, you're voting a president in to, to guide, to lead you, I guess. And if you don't trust them enough to see if, if a, a, a committee of a whole or to put the committees together because you have to have a vote, then what's the purpose of even having a president? It's only two things a president does and they're doing the committees and also putting the agenda. Everything else is. So that is my take on this. Anybody else who wants to go next? Danielle, go.
Okay, well, I would argue you do a lot more than just making the agendas and appointing committees to, to start. Okay, so I think that we are a small board. I think, I know things have been done a certain way in the past, but we are mostly a new board and we are mostly a new administration. So I don't know that what has happened in the past is necessarily going to dictate how this would work in the future. I think that a cow could prevent burnout and benefit administrators. I think it could prevent burnout of our board. I think it could improve efficacy and efficiency of our meeting. I think it could shorten board meetings because I, I don't believe that trust equals constant agreement. I trust your leadership, your vision, your goals, but we don't always agree.
We don't.
I would, I'll give you that.
And that's okay. So we may disagree about committee styles, but we are such a small board that I would, on this particular thing, I might think the whole board might be able to determine how we might best function with the committees. I think that chairs of committees could still be appointed and could still have ownership of being an expert over a particular topic if they wanted to, or they should. But for me, like my due diligence in a board meeting means I need to ask certain questions to better understand something that happened in a committee. And if I'm getting that information firsthand and not from a committee member or from an administrator. And then sometimes, as you know, I ask questions for transparency purposes because I think there's important information that the community needs to hear. I think some of that would be, we could avoid some redundancy actually and make our board meetings more efficient. I've talked with Allison about process around committee of the whole. And for time, I mean, I would trust our administrators and Allison to sort of prioritize the topics and the, the committee items we discuss to make sure that we are not, to, to make it manageable for everybody. The other part is you mentioned needing experts. But I think what you pointed out also while you were talking is that when you create an expert who's been on a committee for so long, you're going to leave a gap if that person leaves. And just you leaving policy for one year doesn't create a new expert in policy. You know, it's going to create somebody who's just getting their feet wet, right? And buildings and grounds, like there will be a huge gap when you are no longer on buildings and grounds. So I think, I don't know. I think that this will improve transparency. I think it will be a little bit more efficient. And then Allison has made this point, but if it doesn't work, we can, we can transition back. So if it does work and proves to be a, a more efficient way of doing things, then, then yay. And if it doesn't, and if you're right and it's a disaster, then we can say, whoa, this is a disaster. Let's go back to the way things were. But those are my, I think those are all of my thoughts about it.
One other thing is the reason we went back to committees is because it was a disaster.
I just. I championed for going back to committees because I attended a handful of committee of the whole meetings before I was elected and then perhaps right after. And I was, I was championing, championing it for Andy because I was unable to get information about topics. Like I didn't, like it felt like, it felt redundant of a school board meeting. It felt like things were being sort of just like basic information, but that's also a different administration. And that's also a product of how information was being shared and channeled at that time. I don't think that's how information would be channeled to us. And I would like to know how the administration feels about the potential of a cow meeting and what they see as the pros and cons as well.
One other thing is instead of changing, there's, there's one other part that I forgot. Instead of changing the cow meeting to cow, maybe we make the committees more efficient. And what I mean by that, and I think I've discussed this with Allison, in our updates, having the committee minutes there, not minutes, but a, a executive summary. Now, I don't want to say minutes, the executive summary of what happened in the meetings. So you can know what, what was the hard line on? What was a decision that they were going to make? What was the problem? And then you can ask questions. So that is a huge thing on that, that it would help understand what is happening in committees. And that can happen every week where you don't have to read all of them. But committees, there's one committee a week, so it'd be added to the, what is it? The, the weekly updates. So that would take care of not knowing what's going on or how the, the, how the, the process is going. But I don't, I know there's other people who want to talk and I don't want to, did you want to? All right, Andy, I knew I saw somebody do that.
Well, I.
I appreciate it. Look, you know, I, I've been on both sides of it. I'm on another board who will use a committee of the whole structure. Let me just say right now in that other board, committee of the whole works, I think, very well. I mean, there, there are cases where, you know, I think the system could function better where maybe some more time might be needed, you know, to evaluate some items. But I'm also relatively newbie on the board there. And, and so I'm learning how this work, what I see is, you know, at least using this other example of Nikle, a very in-depth system where we have sometimes very lengthy meetings. But, but it is in-depth and it is comprehensive. And it does prepare us for what we may be taking action on at a board meeting in a way that, you know, we're, we're not taking votes, but we are getting very detailed reports. We are really truly doing what I think it is that we want to do, which delve into stuff. There are also some advantages because I think having a, a schedule for us, that's regular schedule is great. I think having a schedule that is regular is great for the public because it gives them one-stop shopping or two-stop shopping. So they don't have to track multiple different meetings. If one item covered different committees, you know, then you're still going to be in one place at one time. It's committee of the whole. So I think in, 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 certainly in theory, a committee of the whole is just a better idea to, you know, to get those things done. Frankly, you know, I feel like the, the problem with, and again, I mean, I, I will, you know, reflect on, on how I thought things worked, is my idea to go to committee of the whole. I thought it was a great idea to go to committee of the whole because I thought it would adjust, you know, board members and inability to really see everything across the board and really get everyone on the same page so that, you know, people were able to just accelerate their learning and, and not have to wonder what was going on over there and over there. And then they would just have that one-stop shop. But where I think it failed is I really don't think that it was as thorough a process as it could have been. The risk with a committee of the whole meeting, I feel, is that in trying to stack it, an agenda together, things could get put out that might not otherwise get left out, as you say, in a regular committee meeting. Because you're trying to prioritize and you're trying to put things together. Now, I, I've seen two examples of how that works. And I also agree with what you're saying, it was mainly about personality, which you touched on very briefly, which is it's also about personalities and how personalities work with that. We had pretty big turn towards committees when we had an interim administrator and we had a lot of things to get done and we formalized the process. And I really saw, frankly, with your pressure and with Ms. Vukovich's pressure, I, I felt like, you know, we really did something to empower our individual board members. I thought that was really good. But we can't stick to single model just because. We have to find what works and continue and grow. And sometimes that may be changing things. So I'm willing to, and, and actually, I mean, I, I like the idea of going to committee of the whole. It's more work, I think, but it's less days. But I think that there are some advantages to it. So that said, I mean, again, I'll go along with the majority on this, but we have two relatively new members here. And I think that, you know, it's, a large part of this has to be left to them and how they feel they would best be, you know, participating and learning.
Ben? If he doesn't want to, I mean, please raise your hand if you want to speak. I don't want to pressure anybody else to speak, so.
All right, are, are we, are we voting on this?
No, not yet. We're, we're.
No motion yet.
Well, it, there's no action.
No, we're not. Well, actually.
At the policy meeting, right?
No, 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 no. So here's, here this.
So here's, here, this is, this is why we put this on. There's no action right now. But because as of right now, I, and you guys can change the policy right now, I am going with precedent. I am keeping it as committee. We have always done it as commit, or the president has always done it that way. We don't have any surefire ways of saying it in our policy. We will have to change the policy if we want to change it. I am just, I am doing what we have done on precedent, which is keeping it at committee of the whole until we change our policy on January. I mean, not committee of the whole until we change, if we change our policy on the 20, 20 whatever, whatever day we have policy meeting for governance.
And so, like, I attached the policies and they're really vague and you guys saw those. So part of the work we could do is we could change, we could add into policy that it's based on a board vote or that it's, do you know what I'm saying? Like however we work through the policies to decide. I can't remember. Did you talk with Bob Butler or Dan Blee about it, Allison?
I asked both. And I, I asked, well, not Bob, I asked Dan, and it goes, if you don't have a surefire, it's usually precedent or the way you have done it in the past. That is the same as like, if we don't have a policy, but we have done something over and over in the past, that is, that's how we justify it.
That's how bad, I mean, not to. I mean, that makes sense.
Good, bad, or indifferent. I'm not saying that it's a good policy, bad policy, or whatever. What I'm saying is, we're doing what we have done in the past.
And there was a separate issue earlier this year where that was the advice that was given, like we didn't have a policy for something. So they said, okay, so in lieu of a policy, go on past practice. So try to reach out to people and. Okay, okay. I mean, it wasn't something that was, Carla, you know, controversial, but.
So here's my two cents on this. I mean, we could take a vote on this today. It's noticed as a discussion item with possible approval. But if we're, yeah, that's what it says in the superintendent's update.
I just clicked both.
It says this topic was added to the agenda as a discussion item with possible approval. But it's not a, I don't know where else it's supposed to say it. But anyway.
No, it just changed.
What changed? Oh.
Oh, it says type actions.
What changed?
I put the words in there. It says recommended they discuss.
Just now?
Yeah.
Oh.
So I just put the words.
I'm all for mu mu. I, I like the idea of the committee of the whole. I think it's gonna rescue our administrative staff from like serious weeknight, late night meeting overload. For me, it's not a question of trust of the president, whoever the president is. It's just about what's right for a committee of, for a group of five people. I've wanted to go to a lot more meetings and I just can't. I just can't. But if it was two Wednesday nights in person, I have total Zoom fatigue. That's what I would prefer and I'd be able to learn about a lot of different things. I don't know why we can't still have topics that, that we focus on as individuals, you know? Buildings and grounds, communications, whatever, and still build that, that knowledge. I, I don't know, expertise. Sometimes we're told we're not supposed to be experts. Then we're saying that we have to become experts and that's why we need committees. So I, I'm not really worried about that. I just, this multiple committee model hasn't worked for me for coming up to speed on topics. I have heard a lot about trusting other board members on decisions, but then I'm just, after nine months, there are some things I just really just don't know about yet. And if we had a committee of the whole, I think I would have to, it'd be good for me.
Yeah, I, I'm not super opinionated either way. However, I do think that doing committee of the whole might incentivize or de-incentivize us going deeper into a topic. Because I do know that like in curriculum, for example, we've had meetings that have lasted quite some time. And maybe that was a bad thing, I don't know. But, you know, people, you know, wanted to participate and, you know, that was good. And I just don't know if, if we do a committee of the whole, that's, if we're gonna be able to have designated time to allow for that to happen. Versus, you know, if we have our committees, you know? Yeah, so it's one, one maybe week, you know, or maybe in like February, the meeting might last 30 minutes. But you're also allocating for the possibility that, you know, the March meeting might be two hours in case something, you know, comes up. I mean, I guess what I'm remembering is the music discussion, what we should do with the music program. So like, that's my, that's my hesitation with committee of the whole is that, I mean, kind of like what Tamika's saying is, you can't, it, it's hard to, if you need to, it's hard to dig deep into a topic. And I do think then that having the separate policy meetings does, I guess, maybe not incentivize, but it does allow for people to come in and, you know, also share their thoughts too.
What would stop you from delving deep?
Well, time. If you, well, because isn't that all the different committees? And I mean, that could be a five, six-hour meeting.
So in, in regards to that, most of us, most of us, sometimes, or we don't have a committee meeting.
True.
But most of the time, we do have a committee meeting, at least one committee meeting per month. And those, those things will, and you do not count equity because that is something you chose to do. I mean, it's not part of, this is the ad hoc, I mean, I just don't want.
Creative communications too.
Huh? Yes. Yes, you did, and we have to fix that as well, but that's a different story. No, to make it a permanent one. In our thing, but, but. I just watched where, and I'm just gonna be honest. This is, our lives got a little more hectic and now we're trying to figure it out, but this is what we signed up for.
Oh, it's not, okay.
I'm, I'm just saying, this is what we signed up for.
What is? Committees?
Committees, everything for, this is what we signed up for.
So it, it doesn't.
I'm not.
COW meeting would be longer. Like I, it's not, the time is a, is a small part for a board member, but I'm sorry, I know you're not done. Sorry. I'll wait, but. Go ahead.
So basically, think about, we're gonna put everything in one meeting. And I, and I, and I, you know what? I should, I, I just find that if we're gonna put everything in one meeting, our meetings are at least an hour, 45 minutes to an hour. All four of those, all four committees will be on one meeting. Sometimes we may not have all four, but on the times we have all four, which is usually, most of the time, we have at least three or four of the meetings. They're all gonna go in one and I, I just find how we're gonna slow this down. Ben, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm, and I won't be making any more comments.
Yeah, just to your point with the time. So I know that like, you know, we, we won't have a problem, you know, sitting through the entire meeting. But the only issue is that it, like, let's say there's a parent, they have to wait two hours to talk about what they want to talk about versus a committee meeting that can be like, oh, the, you know, curriculum committee is, you know, next week and I'll attend that and I know it's just on curriculum. So that's what I'm saying with like incentivizing people to participate in a meeting. That's, that's, that's my only point. So just going off of that. It's just like, the length of the meeting could deter people from coming and participating if they feel like they need to.
Well, I'm, Allison has anything to say about how she thinks these would go? And, and maybe speaking to board calendars too, because I feel like part of what we're trying to do is make our governance as a whole more efficient. And if you have a board calendar, you have more of a, an idea of what topics you're looking at and when, and it's going to make things flow. And I think it's all gonna translate into these board meetings being more efficient and incentivizing people to come here. And knowing if they want to go to a COW meeting, they can dive in deep with us and they can reach out to us other ways if it's inconvenient. But I think it's easier access to say, on this day, like Andy said, every month, the committees are gonna meet. And if you have something you want to talk about relevant to any committee, come.
I don't know which way we're gonna do this. Allison, give your opinion and then we have people, you said Karen, we have somebody with their, I can't see who it is, but which way you want to do it? You want to hear the opinion here and then you go, or do you want to go? It's up to you.
So, I, Tamika knows that she and I don't agree on this. I think, I, I understand all the rationale, but I feel like there's an opportunity with a new team and a new group of people to make it better and to address the concerns in the past. And like you were saying, Ben, like, we wouldn't have every single topic every single month. It would just really depend on that calendar. So if we're suddenly in the season of staffing and contracts, like we're gonna have a large portion of our COW as F and P and maybe, do you know what I mean? A smaller portion is a different, we don't have to have communications every month or everything every single month. And I think it would lead to shorter regular board meetings because everybody got to dig into the topic in COW versus we've had a committee and now we bring it to the board meeting and we kind of talk about it again so that everybody's in the loop. Like everybody's in the loop on the front end. So I personally think there's opportunity to make it good and make it what we want. And I agree that we could always go back.
Yeah.
It didn't work.
But it's.
And I know we just.
I know he keeps saying we can go back, but. Go ahead, whoever is, I'm sorry. Let's go with the, I'll come to you next. Go ahead. Whoever's out on the, who's on the screen? Do you need her address and name again or no? Okay. Jean?
Sorry about that. Do you need, do you need my name and address again?
No. She said no.
I, I find this really interesting. As I said, I, I served on the school board for nine years and we had a changeover of staff, of, of staff as well as board members. So there were always new board members. So for, to say learning curve, I think, again, all of you are very smart people. I do think it will hinder discussion if you have, I don't agree with committee of the whole because I personally really liked having individual committees and I did, I did, it's not just trust. If we had to dig in and learn something, the information was available to us. But I, I chaired the curriculum committee meeting when we changed curriculum. We dug in very deep. We had the curriculum person with us, we had teachers on our committee, and there was another board member. Jennifer Pelts and I co-chaired this. And that allowed us to have as many meetings as we needed to, as we assessed and as curriculum was piloted and learned. If I had had, I, I think you need to be respectful of everybody's work schedule, time schedule with meetings. And I understand that as far as an administrative team, we didn't have an administrative team that, we had the appropriate administrators that were at, at the meetings. You know, Bob, when Bob was on Buildings and Grounds and we were assessing a whole bunch of things with the building and Jim Beckman, and I forget whoever else was on it with him, they brought that to us. The assessment was incredible. Did I need to be at a board meeting hearing about all the chemicals and why going green and everything else? I was reading about that ahead of time, but to have, if I had been to a four or five-hour board meeting and for someone to say, that's where I'll, you don't know what's going to come up with each committee. So for you to calendar it and say, well, this month it'll be that, I just think there's, there are too many things that can come up. There are things that you might have to address in communications with regard to social media or whatever. You can't just say, now we're not gonna have it and it ends up being you've got a four or five-hour committee meeting. And I also, in terms of parents, I, I really think that we, parents are always welcome at the committee meetings to have a four or five-hour committee meeting or three-hour, four-hour, to wait that long to talk, I wouldn't be happy about it. But that was just my experience. I, I didn't have any issues with committees in the nine years.
Thank you, Jean. Go ahead. Can you say your name and your address? We all know you, name and address for the record.
Katie Aldo, that was 5715, we're through for a second. Having watched this process completely from the outside for the last seven years, something like that now, committee of the whole, the way it used to be done, worked sometimes. I do think that was more due to the particular board at the time, due to the administrators at the time. It wasn't that effective. I do think it was really important to break into the committees when there was so much work to be done for the last couple of years. But you're kind of heading into a period now where there isn't as much to be done. I attend, I mean, there's still, obviously work to be done, but not three hours for each committee every month. I attend all the committee meetings, most of them. They're not an hour long. Most of them are a half an hour or less at this point. And some of them honestly really don't even need to be happening, like not much happens. It could happen. And then because now the board that you have sitting is a very curious board, a lot of questions are being asked that could, it, it slows down the meeting because these could have been asked at the committee of the whole. They could have asked the expert. It, it could have been covered, we're rehashing things. It's not efficient anymore. It was very efficient for a time, it's not. And then just from my standpoint, like, it would be easier for my schedule, obviously, don't need that too. So I can imagine for, for other people in the server, outside committees, most of those meetings, it would be easier. But just, I think it's just more efficient at this point in time to do that. And, and to Ben's point, like, if you need, if there is a need for like a big, long curriculum chunk, that's fine. So you do that that month and you, and you schedule it that way. And if you need, if there is a thing where you would like a lot of community involvement to be possible, then you schedule that first. Like, it can be done. And, you know, I, I've watched Nicolai, Nicolai does it really well. And, and I completely think you guys are capable of doing it really well.
Ad hoc committees for any deep dives on special topics.
Motion.
Aren't we talking about this on the?
But it's an action and it's a, it's, there's discussion or possible action. So I'm asking if there is a motion, so we can still discuss and change the policy. But if we are going to act, do an action here, then we need to vote. If not, we can run it through, but it will not, for, if you do not do an action, I will not change it. I'm just saying, I'm not changing it.
I thought we were bringing it, somebody, I heard two people say it's coming to the policy.
It is. What I'm saying is, we, it still is going to the policy committee to really write down the policy. If you want to change it to committee of the whole, we can start scheduling committee of the whole right away. And we, what happens if we get to our policy meeting and we can't hammer all of it out? So I'm just saying, one, one way or the other, let, it's at the end of the month. One way or the other, either we leave it here and then we try to work on our policy, but it still may not get fixed because we have had policy meetings where we have to go back and forth and trying to make sure we know what we want in the policy and it'll go another month. Or you can vote now. I, if, if it's gonna stay status quo, I would keep it at committees. If you want to vote, you can vote and put it as committee of the whole. And then we will have to vote on what day we have the committee of the whole at a particular time, I guess. But let's, is, is there going to be a, is there gonna be a motion tonight?
Well, so we have a policy committee meeting next Thursday, right?
It's a, it's a, it's a workshop.
It's a policy workshop for us. And the committee policies are on that agenda. I think we should wait until then, then. It's just a week away. Can Stu?
But remember, I'm just going to say that if we don't get through that polit, I'm just trying to be super parent. If we don't get through that policy, you know, doing the rules and we go back and forth and it doesn't get done, then it's gonna stay as a committee.
Or, okay, could it be the first, could it be the first thing we talk about at our policy workshop?
It's, we're gonna do, yeah, it, it can be whatever we want. It's just that we're, we're going in the order of what, whatever Allison gave out. It's just, we want to make sure, are you gonna do, is there a motion? If there's not gonna be a motion, I'm gonna continue with the agenda.
Trying to understand. So we can take action at the policy workshop if we'd like. I'm, I'd prefer to wait and process.
You can't, we are, we are doing the policy, we're not, we're taking action on the policy, not.
Allison said we were going to discuss committee of the.
Oh, I see. Okay, so this is what Tamika's saying. So I think, so if we review at the policy workshop, we put this in place in the policy, that's the first reading, right?
Which policy would it?
So then it would still be, oh, come for a second reading. So we couldn't say we're switching to committee of the whole right away. So we couldn't say we're switching to committee of the whole right away.
Because you need a first reading, then you need a pause and...
Or you cannot put it in the policy and you can just make... Or you could ask me to add that as an agenda item.
That's, that's what I thought you were doing. Sorry, that's what I thought we were doing.
But how are we gonna...
So it'd be a separate agenda item.
I, I mean, we can...
It's a separate agenda item, but we still won't have the, okay.
Okay, no, no, no.
Go ahead, put it in, uh, put it, we can, I'm just asking, do we have a motion? Does anybody want to do a motion? That's all I'm asking.
But, yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah. Yep, I think I do.
Okay. What is the motion? Wait, can we?
I think. I was thinking. I, I mean, uh...
I, I prefer not to take this vote without Andy. Can we have a five minute recess? I make a motion, I have a five minute recess.
Second.
Um, motion. Five minute recess. Um, Carla, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'll take a five minute recess.
Did someone make a motion?
No, no one's made it yet.
No, I'm...
Let's just lance the boil. You finish what you're saying and then I'll lance the boil.
Sorry for misspeaking. I, I was going to say, is there going to be a motion on the table? One way or the other. Um, at, we, as before, we took our break, Danielle said she might have one. So I'm going to heard if she has one or not.
No, Carla has one. I'll have a second. I'll make a motion to, uh, to move to committee of the whole.
Second.
Um, the motion was made by Danielle Bailey, seconded by Carla Pendleton Cross. Any discussion, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I'll pass.
What?
I'm good. Are you looking straight at me? I want someone else to vote first.
Oh, pass. You're going to vote, though.
Yes.
So, the, you guys come on. I has the right to pass. I. Oh, sorry. Danielle Bailey.
No.
Mr. Win?
No.
Aye.
Ooh. Oh. That wasn't better. Now you're in a pickle.
I'm gonna vote aye.
Oh, wow. Okay.
The vote is three to two to go in favor of committee of the whole. I would suggest in our next, at our policy meeting, we decide what date it is because we have to vote, put it on the agenda for the policy meeting, that we have a date to when we are going to do this, because all of us need to be able to have that date. And we can put it on the agenda for the, the, the whole policy meeting. Okay, for our, number three, consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Just keep going with it and then we out, then you can, he has an issue, then we can pull something out.
Oh, I was...
So, moved by Carla Pendleton Cross. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andy Franklin. Any discussion?
I just, can we pull out D just to talk about the reasoning behind adding a position? And then, uh, can we add that as like a friendly?
No, you have to pull it out and then we have to vote each, every one of these. So you're asking to pull it out?
Pull out D.
Okay, so this is not a consent, um, there's an objection to the consent agenda. We'll go one step at a time. Let's talk about the 3A executive summary. That is, I write it in, Robert's Rules, this is how it goes, Robert's Rules. Executive summary, let's talk about that one and approve it or do what we need to do.
I don't think there's anything you need to approve for the executive summary. So the executive summary just maps out the three items.
Okay, so let's prove the, um, can we approve the finance, financials?
So moved.
Second by Carla, seconded by Danielle. Discussion, audience. Zoom. All in favor to approve the financials? Aye. Five to zero. Approval of minutes.
All moved.
Second.
Moved by Carla, seconded by Danielle. Discussion, audience. Zoom.
Good remix.
Discussion of the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five to zero. Next step, personnel changes. Is this where your question was?
Yeah.
So with the executive summary, I just noted that due to caseload sizes, skills, specifically in sixth grade, we needed to hire an additional special education teacher.
And I had a question about licensure. Because, yes, I don't know how much I can, I mean...
Nope, you're good. Um, I actually responded a bit late. So there's, um, emergency special education license.
You have to say it loud enough because it's open.
An emergency special education.
I had to whisper it, it's an open meeting.
You made me feel weird.
No, I don't know. That's, I don't know. Because it's under executive content, so...
I would, I would just say that the licenses that apply for, I don't, I don't want to...
So... Okay, but we're asking to be, we're asking, you're asking us to approve a position. Is she, are they allowed to work?
Yes.
With just having applied, not having an approved license? Because I feel like that was an issue for us before. There was a lack of application in the past.
But you say it loud enough because I think you feel like we're...
We're meeting the criteria to stay, keep the application current, so fast. Simply applying, and then what the other licensure that they have is, is fine. Is, they, to do what they're doing, they need this application and that's it. And then, because I noticed one of the licenses has lapsed and then there's another one and those are sufficient for doing the job they're doing. Is that right?
English has lapsed.
Hmm?
The English one?
I'm just muttering to myself.
Okay. Okay, if that's, I just want to make sure that it's above words. Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it.
I could also just clarify that it's a term assignment for the school year.
Oh, just for the rest of the school year? Okay. Could, going forward, when we're hiring for spend positions, could we make note of whether, like, can, can it be noted somewhere if somebody has an application in, if it's not obvious in their resume or file?
So this is, I'm gonna make a, a short comment. This was in the agenda.
I asked, I asked about it earlier. I just didn't get a response.
Never mind, I won't finish my full comment because I keep getting cut off.
Sorry, I'm impatient. It's, I have to do, I'm working on it.
Anything else? Anything else for this personnel change? Do we have a motion? I can't remember. Motion, sorry, Ben, seconded by Carla. All in, uh, discussion in the audience. Discussion on Zoom. Back to board discussion, all in favor for...
Aye.
Pose. Five to zero. Business, policy 330, second reading.
Um, so this was the policy that we, I brought back a couple of times. I know that Jenica and Ben worked on it and brought it back to the last meeting, but then there were some questions about one paragraph. So I highlighted that paragraph, um, just so you could, they're both in there so you can see what it looked like before and what it looks like with the recommendation. So the paragraph in question says, "The board shall make decisions to add or remove district programs and areas of study," period. "Within the programs and among the various courses and areas of study that have been board approved, the district administrator and building principals may decide whether a particular course, class, or curricular activity will be offered in a given trimester, term, or school year." So I'm reading that as, "The board determines which programs or areas of study, and then within that, administration has discretion to say, well, it's gonna be, within this music, it's gonna be, you know, or whatever. Or it's gonna be during this trimester, or, you know, that flexibility within that. But it has to be board approved, areas of study." And then the board shall be made aware of a change. So if we were to change a trimester or something like that, we would make sure the board's aware of it prior to the change being implemented. I wasn't here for the music stuff, but I'm, I'm just trying to like put that lens on around like, what were spots where the board knowing about it ahead of time would have been helpful? Um, and some of those pieces to add some of that accountability while still leaving some flexibility for the administration. So I'm totally open to feedback, totally open to feedback because I want to get it right. And I'm sorry, I moved the sentence about, um, the complaint process because it didn't seem to fit there. And I just put it at the end. Should a staff member disagree, they have the opportunity to appeal curricular changes or inactions following the district appeal process. It just felt clunky with that paragraph, so I just moved it to the end. That's all.
Ben?
I think that sentence should go back up there because it's dealing with changes that, uh, the board, you know, makes decisions and then also district administrators make decisions. And I think that that sentence should go with that paragraph. Just, again, like, teachers, I, I mean, personally, I should just speak personally, I never read district policy as a teacher until I needed to argue something. And I do need, I, I do think that that sentence should go back with the other highlighted paragraph.
Does anybody else have anything? I do.
Danielle?
Okay. So for me, I'm not sure I know exactly what the board, what district programs, areas of study, the programs, various courses, area of studies that the board technically approves. So that's just one wondering. But going back to the music example, the way I read this, tell me if this could occur. The board approves, I mean, music is, is required by law. So I don't know that matters that the board approves that. But what, what I think happened was, uh, music still existed as a program, uh, but the courses that, that were offered were changed. So general music was a course that was taken away and then replaced with band, chorus, or orchestra only. That was a change made by administration, not needing board approval and not needing to, uh, uh, I guess, was the assumption, and not needing to make the board aware. So under this paragraph here, could that be done again?
Not the awareness piece.
You tell us, but the board wouldn't have any say.
So the board shall be made aware of a change prior to the change being implemented. Yeah, and I guess I could, I, I...
So that, I'm, I'm trying to let you know that was, that was an issue.
Right.
So it's without, so that's, I'm wondering if that happens again under this scenario and it's still totally okay, other than you have to tell us.
I guess I'm uncertain if that should be a board decision.
Well, I don't know. I might guess I'm looking for guidance on that as well, but, I mean...
Because if we were to say, okay, so we have to teach art, we have a certain amount of minutes of art, next year we're changing this class to graphic design. I could see that being something we would make the board aware of, but I don't know if the board should be stepping in and saying, no, it should be modern art. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, some of the pieces, like, I...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like for general music, again, go, this is the one example we have, very, you know, real example. The implications, you know, there was implications for special education, students in special education, IPs with other, you know, there were, it impacted sort of policy that I would say at a board level, sort of ensuring that all students are, you know, receiving certain services and have certain opportunities. So I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but this is what I want to understand a little bit better and it feels still...
My pushback on that would be that I'm sure the administrative team sat down and said, here's how we can meet the needs of those kids in these courses. And it was just a difference of opinion with the board or certain families or certain people that thought, no. So then who takes those, you know what I'm saying?
Maybe, but I think part of our job as a board is to, is to just say, well, tell us what you consider. Tell us, tell us why.
Sure.
You know what I mean? Like, yeah.
Which would, which would be potentially made aware prior to the change, right?
Yeah. But we wouldn't, like, if you said, we didn't do that, and we're like, oh, we're gonna do it anyway. Not that that would happen, but do you know what I mean? I don't know, like, okay. I'm just, you're in my brain now. Anyway, I'm just, that's, that's how I was thinking about this.
Okay, so I do think that that sentence, uh, that was moved should go back because I think that would take care of, well, I think that would take care of your concern, though. Because let's say that that happened again, the music thing. Well, the music teachers could then follow the appeal process and then it would come to the board at that point.
Well, we would know about it, but you're right.
That's true.
I mean, either way, I don't care.
And then I think since it's the appeal process, that would allow us to make a decision.
Well, you know, the other part of this, though, I'm sorry. I'm just thinking about practicalities here. If a class is temporary, well...
Right, if there's not a...
Question about temporary side. If class is discontinued for a particular reason, you know, we're gonna know about that because then the staff member's gonna have to replace, you're gonna have to, or, or reassign. And you're gonna tell us, either we have to let someone go for some reason or that, uh, you know, that person's gotta be, you know, put somewhere else in staffing update.
Like there's other...
That would typically, so we would know that. We would find that out. The only thing, the only suggestion that I would have on this is, you know, do we want to, we want to specify specifically that this would not be, you know, that this would be for class and not for programs? So in other words, you know, and somehow delineate a change as temporary? In other words, a temporary suspension of a class and call that instead of, you know, however it was framed.
Class or curriculum.
Instead of saying remove, to, add or remove, just say temporarily suspend a class.
So what about human growth and development? I guess, is that statutorily up to the board? Or if could the administration say, we don't want to...
I believe it's the curriculum that is passed by the board and the way it's implemented or how it's implemented is administration. Go ahead.
Right, so I have to admit, I, I have not seen anything nefarious in this when I've read it. Let me give you my less nefarious interpretation of its possible meaning. We make decisions on programs and areas of study, right? We're gonna have art, we're gonna have music, we're gonna have orchestra, right? This is saying a particular course, class, or curricular activity, which is a much more limited set of words, will be offered in any given trimester, term, or school year. It puts me on the edge, but, right? So what I think of is like allied arts. You're not gonna have each allied art in every trimester. So this, like, we might say, um, what is it, tech ed? It's gonna be part of the curriculum. But Nick isn't getting tech ed the entire year. He's gonna get it in a particular trimester. So this provision allows for that. That he's in a not have tech ed for two out of his three trimesters and the district has discretion to make those kinds of plans. And then it's just a question of running a, a good organization to let us know if something is disappearing, right? And that, that's that big thing that happened with the music. But that's how I read this.
Might just be PTSD from...
So that's how I read this, having not been on the board when all that happened. And I don't know if that's how you perceived this.
Yeah, you don't have this.
But that's how I see it. And I don't have a problem with this.
The school year piece too could even be, well, we don't offer Spanish in fourth grade. We offer it in fifth grade. Like, that could be that bigger school year piece too. I don't read it as anything, but I didn't experience that. So I understand, like...
They have Spanish in fourth grade, right?
I was just giving an example.
No, they don't, no, not to us.
Like a course that might not be offered in a certain school year.
So is the second reading mean we can vote on this? We can make a motion to?
Yes. I, I move, as long as it's not changes or we don't need to discuss anything else.
And I'm good with Ben's sentence back.
With that correction.
Yeah.
Because that's a minor correction, yeah.
I make a motion, if you'll allow me to. Motion to approve policy 333 curriculum improvement as revised by Ben. The sentence moved.
Second.
Motion by Carla, seconded by Ben. Discussion in the audience? Discussion on Zoom. No one? Discussion with the board? Back to the board? All in favor? Aye.
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 Five to zero, motion carries. For B, policy 316 rules.
So I'm, I was going to ask you, Tamika, to table this one because Ms. Westfall is ill and can't be here, and this was something that she pulled and worked on and it's very long. And I would like her to be able to answer her questions.
I will move it to the policy meeting for, in January. Uh, whatever day that is, what's the date?
Twenty sixth.
No, January.
That would mean that she would have.
The twenty sixth, yes, sorry.
Do we have questions about it? Or do you want her to just be able to bear the fruits of her labor by talking to us about it?
Well, here is what I suggest, we move it. Um, and we read it. And if we have questions, we can ask her and then let her do her full presentation. And if they don't answer the question, then we can ask more questions. But I want to make sure that we read the policy fully. Let her answer the questions or let her do her presentation and then we ask questions. But that is going to be, we can do that on the January twenty sixth meeting.
Is this a first reading?
Oh, question. Um, but now we're doing committee of the whole, right? So then.
I'm trying to do this before.
Policy workshop.
We still have the policy workshop coming up.
Okay, okay.
Could this be first? Because if I asked Jenica to come so that she could be first, is that okay?
Is it what?
Could it be first on the agenda? Because Jenica wasn't going to.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
It's agenda, but whatever you want. Um, but we don't know that, we don't have a vote yet, so.
I just have one suggestion.
A suggestion, oh, okay.
Um, so.
But I can email turn.
Yeah, alright.
So is there a motion?
Uh, so move to table.
I'll second.
Second for, uh, motion by Ben, seconded by Andy.
Aye.
Any discussion on tabling? Zoom, is there any discussion on tabling? Any discussion here on tabling?
Yeah, I mean, if, if everybody was prepared for this meeting, they should have read this policy. If we have questions, maybe it would make sense to put them out there now so Jenica could just ask.
The motion is to table it.
I'm discussing why I don't think we should table it.
It's only to table it.
And I'm saying why I'm against tabling it.
Okay.
Is that not?
Okay, 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 okay.
Okay. I am against tabling it because I think we could just, uh, I would, I would move to approve a first reading, bring it to the policy workshop. You have time to read it if you haven't already and then ask questions in between now and then. And maybe Jenica doesn't have to come to our policy meeting if there are no questions. So maybe we can save administration some time. I personally have no questions about it.
Okay, we're going to uh, vote on tabling it. All in favor of tabling? Let's do a roll call vote because I think it's.
I, I know, that's right.
Andy mistook himself for you.
No.
Um, I'm sorry, can I take Russ?
Uh, no.
Mr. Winn?
No.
Miss Bailey?
My, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Do you want to table it?
No. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Troublemaker.
So.
So the motion is um, nailed.
You can move to.
Can I?
The first reading.
To approve the first reading.
And I'll second.
Motion to approve this first reading um, by Ben, seconded by Danielle.
So.
Discussion, discussion in the audience. Discussion on the Zoom. Discussion among the board.
So this is a motion.
Hold on, discussion on the board, Ben.
Oh, yes. So it says uh, on page, uh, oh, it's not labeled, I don't know what page this is. One, two, three, on page three at the top. Since the administrators who make a final recommendation to the board for approval of a textbook shall ensure that the input of relevant staff has been solicited and given consideration. I would like it to read something like this where the administrator who makes a final recommendation in partnership with uh, the relevant staff. Or actually, no, that one makes sense then. But the administrators who made the final recommendation for the board will do so in partnership with the relevant staff.
I kind of read it as saying that.
It's the same thing.
Shall ensure that the.
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know, they're.
Since shall be considered.
Yeah, given consideration. You know, it's like, it's kind of loose. Versus if you uh, do it in partnership with, it's more of a, you know, uh, collaborative sort of thing versus, yeah, we considered it, but you know, we don't like your opinion, you know? So.
So my definition.
Shall work in collaboration with relevant staff.
But, okay, is that what you're saying?
That is what I'm suggesting. And I thought I would just say that and I don't know if that's uh.
So instead of ensure the input, work in collaboration with.
Something in collaboration with or in partnership with.
Sure. I don't have an issue with that because I read it as both that meaning collaboration, so that's totally fine.
And the fact that you get the written summary and a recommendation kind of.
Yes. Yes, I, yes, I do like the written summary.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so amendment to the uh, motion with a friendly amendment, I guess, with the changes.
Yeah. Oh. Sure. And that's okay because it'll come back.
I mean, right, yeah.
It's still.
I guess it was just a sugge, yeah, okay.
He's, but you guys are agreeing with the suggestion. So you need to make sure that the amendment is with his suggestions and.
Allison was, I guess, yeah, I would kind of want to make sure Jenica agreed because it's her baby, but if it's not, if you don't think it's.
I don't think so.
Then that's fine, okay.
Yep, then I'll accept the friendly. Did I move? I'm losing my mind a little bit, I'll accept the friendly.
Anything else? Vote, all in favor? Aye.
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 Five to zero.
Oh, Jenica did that.
Nope.
Declaration of open enrollment seats.
Alright, so we have two recommendations. And you have two attachments, so the first one is for general education students. Um, you can see the rationale. You have the data doc so you can see the trends. Currently, we have seventy four 4K students. So the recommendation is to declare ten seats for 5K, which would get us to eighty four students. If we didn't add any other students, which is highly unlikely, we'd be at a class size of sixteen point eight. But we would still have space for twenty one additional K five students that we don't, just don't know about right now that just show up or enroll for K five. Um, you can look at the trend data that it's been roughly around ten or so open enrollment seats that have been filled each year, some a little bit above, some a little bit below. Um, and you can also see that this la, this current school year was really an outlier with how many additional residents or move-ins we had show up, and that was twenty. So that was the rationale for ensuring that we had at least twenty spaces open in case we were to have another large jump like this year. Um, on the flip side, if we were to not declare enough open enrollment seats, um, and let's say we just stayed at seventy four, that would be an average class size of fourteen point eight, which would be a staff reduction because we could go down to four classrooms. So it's, it's a balance because we don't want to not declare open enrollment and then have to look at staffing cuts in kindergarten. So I think that this leaves a large enough buffer. Um, the other piece of that is just, we've put some systems in place already to start the enrollment process earlier and to make sure that we have checks and balances to make sure we're monitoring those numbers all summer. So let's say we had some out of this world jump of thirty some kids. We would be able to adjust for that and make staffing decisions the other way prior to school starting. Why don't we just do regular ed first?
Ben first because I saw his hand.
Okay, um, so it, it does look like we jump every year and I mean, so is this open for, like, we, we can approve however many we want? That, that's what we can do. So like, again, I, I've never thought too much about open enrollment uh, because, you know, I was in high school and it's just a little bit different, but um, I mean, what if we did six? And then you have an average class size of sixteen? And then from there, you know, we're going to get more people. If, at least, that's what the trend at least shows.
So just out of trend of previous times, um, what you declare is all you can take. So.
It's your maximum.
That's your, your maximum. So in regards to that, if we go in and we have, if nobody comes in, I get it. Yes, we're going to be on the low. But last year, we didn't think we were going to have as big as a jump. And we had a huge jump. And that is trending, but we, we also, it goes like two, three years and then all of a sudden there's a dive. Even though it, it might, and I think pandemic did a little bit to that. But over the years that I've been here, it, our enrollment went up and then it died for a while. And we lose like thirty, forty kids overall. And then it go back up slowly and then we lose kids. Um, so I would suggest that we, we not bring it down because we may need the kids and going to six, it might be under. We might have under the amount. And I'd rather not lose a staffer because we have no kids in the classroom or not enough.
Sorry, Ben speaking to your, so the 4K, 5K team met and analyzed the data and determined that it was an average increase of sixteen kids per year. So I would be leaving, with ten, would be leaving space for twenty one. So that's still like an additional five above the average.
And, but what, what is our policy again on kindergarten for how many kids per class? Is it twenty to?
At twenty one, they get a pair of professional. But they have pair of professionals regardless.
Okay.
So we've never taken a pair away just because it's over than twenty one.
Got it.
Go ahead, Carla.
I just didn't understand what that opening sentence meant. Ten open enrollments for kindergarten and zero seats. Does that mean no open enrollment?
I'm sorry.
Other grade?
Typo. I'm sorry. It's supposed to say zero seats for students with IPs.
Oh, zero seats for students with IPs.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The other attachment.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So this is not any decision on open enrollments for any other grades?
Yep, just only recommending ten for kindergarten.
Every other grade will not have any.
It is, Carla, it's what you're asking.
Okay, right, so this is saying ten open enrollment seats for kindergarten, zero open enrollment seats for kids with IPs, zero open enrollment seats for any other grade.
Correct. So I was just saying only.
Okay.
I apologize, that was a.
Just making sure I understood.
No, that was, I just missed some words.
I have a tech, a technical question because I'm just trying to understand your, the graph, what the, your prior year 4K, so that's the class coming in, September, is that the actual number?
Yep, so September count, that's how many kids we had, and then at January count, that's how many.
And does that, does the September number include the open enroll in?
Yes.
So you're, uh, okay.
So that's the number of kids that were there in September when school started, on third Friday count, which includes OE.
So in twenty one, twenty two, is that, oh, that's COVID, maybe that's why I'm having a hard time with understanding this.
Okay. So Ben, when you're looking at that jump, that includes the open enrollment. So. That's what I'm saying, so like eleven, twelve, went from eighty eight to ninety nine, but there were eleven OE kids that were in that number.
But that's not always the case, right? So like thirteen, fourteen.
Right, no, I gave it.
Sixty eight. Yeah. But like sixty eight to eighty nine, that had to have been.
Does that mean there were no new residents?
Well, sixty eight to eighty nine, right, so sixty eight to eighty nine, it looks like there were new residents then.
Right, which is what we're trying to buffer in, so that's it.
Right.
So we don't actually know that it was eleven open enrollment?
No, we do, look at the next.
Yeah, you do.
Column trade.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, so that's, that's not.
Yeah, sorry. So I just.
Danielle.
Guys, I.
Carla had her, but Carla had her hand up.
But I didn't finish my.
Can I defer to her so she can finish?
Sorry, I had a technical question and then I have another, the, my last question is, um, I know that administration met with the K five teachers who are also meeting, right? To, to think about this, to present these particular recommendations. So can I ask what their response was to this recommendation for open enroll, for the ten open enroll?
I didn't get any feedback on their response. I got their document from them stating.
Right.
The students with IPs situation and then the average of sixteen. And then Dr. Smith shared their recommendation with them. I didn't get any.
So we don't actually know how the K five teachers feel about this recommendation. I feel like that's a, a miss.
So.
A little bit.
I would push back on that a little bit and say it's an administrative and board decision on open enrollment seats. But because they reached out, I wanted to make sure they were aware of the recommendation prior to. So it was Friday that they got it because I wanted to make sure they knew before it was posted.
Oh, okay.
I'm done, thank you.
Can I ask about the, the sped open enrollment? I know that was a separate document.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just, I didn't know that open enrollment for sped students was did separately from open enrollment for non-sped students. But so if I'm understanding right, let's say I'm a K five student, I'm seeking open enrollment. In K four, I had an IP, I'm not going to get in.
No, if you were here in K four, you're here in K.
No, anywhere, like, oh, somewhere else in Wisconsin, I have an IP. You're not going to consider me for open enrollment.
On our weights and our.
Right.
Yes.
But if I don't have an IP but need one, I could still get in on open enrollment, as long as I don't have the IP yet.
So it's.
Someone could still come in with.
Hold on, let her.
Interesting you say that because there are some districts, like, there is the potential to have an open enrolled student identified. The district could say, we can no longer.
Our policy says.
Have staffing for that and.
Let her finish.
This district hasn't ever done that.
So that, that's, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah.
So hypothetically, you admit a K five student. Maybe they know, maybe they don't know that they need an IP. You discover they need an IP, hypothetically, you can essentially boot them.
Yeah.
Not essentially.
District never has.
Okay, and you would not?
We haven't made any decisions to do that.
Because I think it's in our policy.
That we won't.
That they know that we can.
That we can do that.
That an open enroll student who gets, who needs an IP.
If they end up needing services that we can't provide.
Yeah, and that's the way it's written, if the service, we can't provide the service.
Agreed.
Based on.
So it's a discretionary choice. Not just staffing, it's just, yeah.
Typically, that's what I'll look at.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Does that policy give the board the discretion or the administration the discretion?
It's the administration.
I mean, again, Matt.
Yeah, I'd have to dig into it more.
You wouldn't do something like that.
We're not doing that right now, but.
And you wouldn't do it without telling the board anyways.
I'm assuming the board would have to approve that, just like when we brought open enrollment for attendance.
Yes.
I would think that would have to be board approved.
Yeah, so I think it's twofold. If it's not in, I think both of it, 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 if it doesn't go with the, the guidelines, if they do need an IP, you can decide discretionary, do that. If they are in the school itself, I think both of those come to the board because it.
Right.
It, it is kicking a, a kid out of the district. So I believe both of them have to come in, it's just different causes.
Yep. Yep. Like when I brought students around attendance, I had to bring this to the board and it was board decisions.
And when I vote every no every time.
Right.
So I'm a big proponent of uh open enrollment where it makes sense financially do it. It sounds to me like uh there would be no impact to other than saving a position. So we end up net positive uh from financial standpoint for taking these students. Because we would get paid for accepting them.
Yep.
So.
You have to, you have to save cost and you get revenue for open enrollment as well. The the cost differences, like we were talking about.
So we could, as a board, we could say, well, let's save money. Hey, why take anyone? We could save money, but if we're gonna have a net positive, you know, that that's one factor, you know, and then need to go in. The other thing is, sorry, classroom management goes, there's five kids, five. So this would be roughly two or three kids per class. So I guess, you know, there's a negative perception about open enrollment students not being part of our community and I feel like Glendale, we've all created. And and that's what they would be. The only other part of this is we've had many conversations about fact that open enrollment ends right now uh at eighth grade. And so anyone who comes in would wouldn't have that time to either join the district or find some males after they depart. And um right now, there's no pathway for them to continue to Nicolay. I assume that that's pretty well spelled out.
Yeah.
So I I would be in favor of that recommendation. Um, is there a motion? I'll make the motion to adopt the recommendation as to both special education and regular open enrollment.
Do we have a second? Second? I'm making a second. Discussion in the audience. Discussion on the Zoom. Back to discussion of we're gonna, Ms. Kelly would like to speak, go ahead.
Sure, I just wanted to say, and I know we prefaced this at the last board meeting about using that weighted system for students with I E Ps. And I don't want the perception of saying zero open enrollment seats for students with I E Ps that require cross cat services or speech and language services. It's not a financial decision, it's essentially us as a district saying we want to be able to continue to provide high quality special education services for our students. And so that's really where the mindset is that we don't wanna have to hire somebody mid-year. And really looking at trends and bubbles and and what we're seeing in terms of students in the evaluation process right now. And that's really where that decision making is coming from and I want that to be super clear for people. Yeah, and I know we talked about that, like attaching a quantity to a human being feels different and um kind of icky, but I also feel like it's really important for us when we're thinking about our practices and how we're planning well for the students entering our buildings. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was our eighth graders who are here um and that are open enrollment students. Um, our guidance or our school counselor that's serving our seventh and eighth grade students. Ensuring that they have a transition plan into high school. And all of our students that are um not going to be attending high school at Nicolay do have a high school identified, so they know where they're going and they have a transition plan. That's something we were really intentional about doing and we are feeling really good about that.
You know, I just, if I can, I just wanna say, I mean, that's really important that you say that. And I'm, I know we've had conversations about this before, but I don't know that I've ever heard, frankly, until you've come along, that we've had that commitment towards making sure that we transition. I know that in past, our guidance counselor worked with some of those transition to new schools, but I appreciate the fact that these students are identified and that they're offering, they're offered some services. Because by that point, some in eighth grade, I think it's fair to say that those students have contributed and been part of our community. And so if they can't continue in that community into the next district, uh I I think that that's important that we do work with them, so thank you.
Agreed, and you know, Anna Young, the principal at Glen Hills, really, really helped to kind of make sure that we were.
Ben?
Yeah, my only hesitation with is, you know, with what happened this year. Cause I don't want the kindergarten teachers to burn out. I mean, teaching a class of, cause like I taught classes of twenty eight to thirty, you know, but that that was high school, so it's, you know, that's a little bit easier to manage, uh in my opinion. I don't know if that's factual or not, um but uh so that's, that's my primary concern here. And uh, but then again, yeah.
What are you, okay, I don't, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
Well, with ten, ten seats.
But each of them have paras, so technically according to our our policy, if we did things the way we, our policy said, they wouldn't have a para until they have twenty two kids. Once they, I think it's twenty one kids, once they have twenty one, I'm just saying that is what our policy says, once they have twenty one kids, they get a para, but they have a para now.
Yeah.
So I don't.
But like, you know, the thing is, so I mean, there's whole class instruction, there's group instruction. And if you're, you know, teaching them phonics or something like that, you're, I mean, what, first of all, I've never taught phonics, but I'm I do know that, you know, you'll do that in small groups sometimes, you know, and sometimes you have to work one on one depending on how intensive it has to be. But, you know, if you're uh kindergarten teacher, you know, you those groups of five, well, I mean, four groups is a lot more manageable than five groups, you know? So anyways, that's my primary concern. However, it does look like most of the, or most of the increase this year wasn't from open enrollment, so. But, I mean, so I I don't know, you know, I guess I'm uncertain about how you weigh the chances of an increase of enrollment because people move into the district. I I guess that is something I I don't know.
I I'll tell you how.
Yeah.
You listen to the people that have looked at the data and kind of, we don't, they have looked at more than ju, did you look at the financial aspect of this, Lindsay? Did you look at the, uh Kelly, did you look at the the aspect of if some of these open enrollment might have I E Ps just in case, even though we're not taking those kids? Have you looked at the possibility that some of these kids are are going to possibly have I E Ps?
Yeah, so those are looked at as our students then.
Right, I understand.
To her like our our rolling average of newly qualified students.
And.
It's our best prediction possible.
So just. Gonna say, Ben, so if we took all ten open enrollments and added that to the current numbers we have protected, the class sizes would be sixteen point eight. We're leaving a buffer of twenty one, like new residents that we don't know about.
Or class.
Right, and so it's like, I I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying about, you know, listening to them and and that's fine, however, and again, no one could anticipate this, but we had a huge increase, even though we only
So that's. For next year with that buffer.
So we we allow, we had eleven people on open enrollment, now we're saying ten. Well, again.
We added twenty extra ones this year that we didn't know about.
Well, right, right, so that's what I'm saying, where it's just like, so even though, so I mean, I trust your opinions and all that, but I'm just saying these things can happen even when experts are making those decisions.
And I'm not saying I'm an expert, I'm saying I'm just looking at the numbers, crunching the numbers and leaving that bubble, because we had a bubble we didn't anticipate. So this leaves room for another bubble in case that were to happen again.
And I understand what you're saying, Ben, but let's do the opposite.
Yeah, it could be, it could be the other way.
It happens if it's the opposite, that we have ten, but we get nobody else. We end up losing a staffer.
Well, what are, yeah, what are, what's the four at right now?
Right, seventy four.
Seventy four, okay.
So with the ten, it would be eighty four.
Right, and that's the sixteen point eight, right?
Always get people who wanna come into K five because it's a full day program, like you ha, I mean, that's.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Right, I I appreciate that you enrolled, that you've planned for like hopefully an improbable leap and it would still be manageable.
And if it happened, we'd be monitoring it during the summer.
Right.
And so it's not like we would just.
That's not gonna happen.
If we got to July and we're like, holy cow, we enrolled thirty?
Yeah.
We have to make a staff.
Which is different from how we did it last year.
It does seem like twenty one's up.
And we, um, I think, are we, are we doing those um earlier? Cause I I think I
Yes.
I gave you the uh the suggestion to do it in March, April.
We're doing May.
But twenty one or thirty one? How much was the increase? Oh, twenty was up.
Twenty this year.
Right, with 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 regular enrollment, right?
I say, any more discussion on the, go ahead, Dan.
I just wanna preface my vote because I appreciate all the planning you're doing. I think that you guys, I think you're prepared and I trust that this is going to go smoothly. My one issue right now is that I don't have stakeholder feedback from the K five team. Granted, it should, it, not that they should be making the decision necessarily, but that input's important to me when I make a decision, so. I don't think the way that I vote will ruin this or impede anything, but like that's my sort of just principled issue right here. Sorry. That's all.
Um, Car. Danielle said you could go.
I'm telling. I was just waving at her, I thought she was waving at.
Who is, uh, hand up, oh wait, I did I, I did the, here, so let's go here. Cause we already did it, but it's rare that somebody wants to speak, so we will. Who is speaking?
I am again. I I'm gonna have to, I I'm just gonna say, I support what administration, I made this decision nine times. That's what your administrative team is, you don't have your classroom teachers making the decision on classroom size with open enrollment. It's not, they're not the stakeholders, they, that's your decision as a board. You have elected, you have chosen the superintendent to make and analyze this decision and that's what you have to trust.
Not challenging me this year.
You're, I I know you're all news, some of you.
Well, I've been here for three years, but I I appreciate your opinion and your experience. I just, I do believe teachers are stakeholders. And so it impacts them, so it's important when I make a decision, but I appreciate your input.
Okay, we're gonna vote on this. All in favor of uh, I didn't even know, what is the motion? I, cause I really forgot.
Most have to recommendations.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then open enrollment seats.
For K five, no.
K five.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Um, extend, okay, so it's four to one. The deal with the no, so we'll know. Okay, motion approves. Student survey, DAP survey, our services DAP survey. This is.
I thought this was gonna be a short one.
I it just proves my point. Kelly, is that you?
It is.
Okay.
Trying to get it.
Oh, is it gonna be up on the screen?
And I'll um share it with you guys too, sorry, I meant to upload it for the meeting. I'll share it with you and then upload it too.
Oh, like in real time?
Yeah, so I'll send it to you via email and then I'll put it in Board Dice right now too. Cause I meant to do that. Here comes via email.
Can I just take the excuse to physically move? I'm gonna come.
Can I stand over there? I feel like I do have to.
Was not intentional, Carla.
Your computer would die too, along with me.
So you're trying to take my computer out now, huh?
Okay. So, thank you everybody for giving me an opportunity to present to you today. Today, I am sharing all the results of the DAP survey that was administered to our Glen Hills Middle School students. Three hundred and forty three took the survey and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in detail. But I do wanna talk about what the DAP survey is. The DAP survey stands for the developmental assets. So developmental assets, um those ideas come from um a research framework that tells us that the more assets students have in their lives, the more likely they are to experience success, okay? And those successes might look like those students do better in school. Students with more assets are better prepared for post-high school education and their careers. They contribute more to their communities and society as a whole. And these students are more likely to avoid high risk behaviors. So that would include things like violence, substance abuse and early sexual activity. Okay, so we're gonna talk about the survey sample. I know people are gonna have questions. I love that we have a curious board. Thank you for describing our school board that way because I really do think it describes the board and I think it's great. Right? Can can I just really wanna get through the presentation? And then we'll take time for questions, yeah, okay. So this is our survey sample. So three hundred forty eight students took the survey. Excuse me. Our student services team was really disappointed. I've got fodder. In that result, um, three student services team members went to every classroom to assist with the survey administrations. My goodness. And we really thought we would have better turnout. They were seeing things like error messages fly up and they weren't sure, is it our wifi? Or was it something at the search institute who pushes out the DAP survey? Because they really felt like more students than that actually sat down and went through the survey. So some of the surveys were essentially scrubbed or eliminated. That was fifty nine percent of those three hundred forty eight surveys. Those were eliminated because the students either had six or more missing questions that they just skipped and didn't answer. They might have had like grades identified other than those grades that were being surveyed. They may have had an ordered sequence of responses where they were responding one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, or like alternating responses, so. Survey responses indicating that the survey wasn't being taken seriously by the student it was being administered to. Okay. Okay, the next um slide is really our survey sample. So it shows the number of females that took our, the survey and the percentage of samples, the number of males, the percentage of samples. And then we saw some discrepant data that I had to go back and email the DAP people. Because those didn't total the number of students that took the survey. And they said because nineteen of the students selected not identified. Like I don't identify as male or female and two students just chose not to answer the question. I know people like to crunch the numbers, so I wanted to make sure. A response for that. Okay. Um, the next slide is going to show, um, oh, I've got it later here. Okay, um, the race and ethnicity breakdown and just like the gender, the students self-identified. So this information, if you were to look at like our student information system, this information doesn't necessarily line up with maybe how a parent identified a student in infinite campus, okay? So this shows how our students are identifying their race or ethnicity. So we have to keep that in mind as we're looking at the survey results. So now I'm gonna go over the key. So the idea is that the more assets our students have in their lives, right? The more likely they are to find success. And as we're looking through the results, this key will hold true. So um students with the lowest level of assets and by lowest level, I would say between zero and twenty nine out of sixty assets, those students would fall in what we would call the challenged range, okay? Experiencing the least amount of developmental assets in their lives and almost like identifying them as having a fragile set of assets. Our students that we would identify as vulnerable have between thirty and forty one identified assets in their lives. Students with an adequate set of assets would have between forty two and fifty one. And students with thriving, that would be our highest level of assets and those would be students experiencing between fifty two and sixty assets in their lives. Okay, so I'm gonna go into now overall DAP scores and these are like our overall composite scores. My daughter made me put this year in red. She said I need to be very clear about what I'm talking about this year as opposed to last school year. She said I need to be very clear about what I'm talking about this year as opposed to last school year. And there are a few things I wanna, I wanna point out to you that I think are things that we can celebrate. While they're not huge changes, they're still indicators that we're moving the dial in the right direction. So the first thing I wanna point out is this year, about fifty percent of our youth are demonstrating an adequate or higher level of total assets. And that's an increase from last school year, when about forty-seven percent of our students were in the adequate or thriving range, okay? Another small celebration is that we were able to move from seventeen percent of our students falling in that challenged range, again, having like a, a fragile set of assets. We were able to move that down to fifteen percent. While we would like that, right, to be much lower, it feels good to know that we're moving in the right direction. And I do wanna point out that this data was pulled in November, right? So essentially in the fall of this school year. I know you guys really invested a lot in our student services team and they're so excited about administering this survey next school year. Yeah. Okay. So, the next thing we're gonna go through, and we're gonna do this pretty quickly, um, is we're gonna look at cohorts or groups of students. Because I think as we move forward, this is the thing we're really going to wanna do. Because what we wanna see is how did our students that were fourth graders last year look as fifth graders this year, right? My daughter made me do this too, she keeps these boxes around the cohorts cause she said that made it clearer and I think it does actually.
Yeah.
Um, yes, she's really smart. So, um, and then what I wanted to do is, is add challenged plus vulnerable to make that challenged and vulnerable, right? With our adequate and thriving and adding those students together. Because for me, that really kind of helps to see, how are we doing when we're looking at those cohorts of students? And we've got some work to do. When you kind of see, we want this challenged and vulnerable number to be decreasing, to go, be going down. And we want our students that are adequate and thriving, we wanna see that number go up, right? So that really will let us look at those cohorts or groups of students and maybe get some ideas about where we should be or could be inserting some extra supports. Um, I also felt that it was really important to do an asset breakdown by race and ethnicity. Um, I don't think we looked at the data like that last school year, but knowing that equity is really at the heart of what we do with our work, I felt that it was important to put this data in front of you as well. Again, I'm going to remind you, this is how students self-identify their race, okay? And you can see, like just to highlight here, our highest number of students that are falling at that challenged and vulnerable level are students that identified as other. And our highest level of students that are adequate and thriving are our students that identify as white. Okay, so now I'm gonna talk to you about the different categories or groups of assets. These are the developmental assets that are present in the lives of students. Some of them are considered external assets. So they're present around the student, right? And some of them are contender, considered internal assets. Are things that we, as the people, adults and providers around those students can really help to grow and develop, okay? All of them equally important. So I'm just gonna highlight those asset areas if you don't mind, because I think it's really important to hear. The first external asset is support. So that is knowing that our young people need to be surrounded by people who love them, care for them, appreciate them, and accept them. The next, next external asset is empowerment, that our students need to feel valued and they also need to know that they are valuable. And this happens when our students or our youth feel safe and when they feel respected. Boundaries and expectations are equally important. There needs to be clear rules, consistent boundaries, consequences for breaking the rules, and encouragement for students to do their best. And then the final external asset was constructive use of time, which is a misnomer. Um, because it's not how I think of constructive use of time. They describe it as young people needing opportunities outside of school to learn and develop new skills and interest with other youth and other adults, okay? And then I'm gonna run through the internal assets. So those are the assets that we can develop within our students. Number one, a commitment to learning. So our students need a sense of the lasting importance of learning and a belief in their own abilities. Positive values, we need, they need to develop strong values and principles that will help them make healthy life choices. Social competencies, they need skills to interact effectively with others to make difficult decisions and to cope with new situations. And then the last one here is positive identity. Students need to believe in their own self-worth and they need to feel that they have control over the things that are happening to them, okay? So those are the developmental assets. And when we look at how our students rated in those areas. So again, this is this school year. Last school year is over here with black. And there is some major celebrations to make here, some growth that needs to happen, right? So all of the assets that are in orange are assets that fall in that vulnerable category, okay? The assets that are purple are adequate. So you can see last year, we only had four assets that fell in that adequate category and we were able to grow that from four falling into adequate up to six, okay? That's great. We don't want any, any of these things falling in the vulnerable range, but the fact that we were able to bump some up, I think is a big celebration. I need to stop and remind you or share with you that these measures are based on a range from zero to thirty and not sixty, okay? Like the, like the overall assets, this is just, we're talking about the developmental assets, okay? Um, the other thing I think is really important to point out is that every single developmental asset grew in a positive direction, okay? Not significant, but again, we're moving the dial in the right direction. The two areas of weakness here, again, are constructive use of time and positive identity, okay? And if I were to go back and just remind us what that looks like, constructive use of time, giving students opportunities outside of school to learn and develop new skills and interests with other youth and adults. And then positive identity, young people need to believe in their own self-worth. They need to feel that they have control over things that happen to them. So the results of this survey were shared with our student services team and with the district leadership team. And there are plans to share this out district-wide with all teachers at one of our extended hours, um, in February. But I do wanna share with you some of the strategies we, we've identified to target those two assets that fall in that vulnerable range, okay? And to know that we are open to feedback from the board about strategies because this is kind of a collaborative effort, right? So to address constructive use of time, we'd like to continue to promote and add to the diverse offerings of our after-school clubs and programs. And I will say that this has been a really big celebration for us this school year. I think we have over sixty after-school clubs at Glen Hills alone uh, with some really active participation in those clubs. So I think that we will see that, um, hopefully improve our scores next year. We thought it would be a great idea to survey our youth to ensure that we're aligning their interests with the offerings we're providing. We'd like to identify and encourage students that are less engaged in programs outside of their school day to have quality resources, resource and access to the clubs and activities we do offer, okay? And that is one of the things we, we look at when we notice maybe a student isn't an engaged student is we might look at, um, maybe they're not engaged in the classroom. We might look at, well, what clubs or activities are they involved in outside of the school day? And how can we help them feel more connected to school? And then we'd like to seek opportunities to collaborate with outside programs and organizations. And then to address positive identity, which was another lagging developmental asset area, we'd really like to continue to leverage the strategies our students are learning through restorative practices and responsive classrooms to promote that relationship building. We've really seen that have positive results here and we really wanna continue with that work. We think it's really important that we continue to provide those tiered interventions for students that need more in the area of social and emotional learning. We'd like to seek to promote youth leadership in our buildings. We really would like to investigate, investigate a universal screening tool that's going to help us more efficiently identify students that need more, okay? Right now, we're using a very gated approach, we're waiting for a teacher to like let us know. I mean, we know sometimes there are students sitting there, right? Not feeling good about who they are, who don't have a good positive self-identity and we might not know that. And then we'd like to continue to promote and celebrate the diversity inclusion of our staff and our students. Okay, the next area we're going to look at, those are the developmental assets, but it's also very important to look at the different contexts through which our students are, are developing their internal and some of those external assets as well. So it divided, um, the context into five categories. One of those being personal assets. Internal strengths that shape the character of our young people, including self-concepts, their values, their attitude and capabilities. Social assets, those are experienced through personal relationships with others, particularly with their friends, right? Family assets, those are things like family support, positive family communication. Our students given useful roles within their families. School assets are, are our students experiencing achievement motivation? Are they engaged in school? Are they attending school where there is a caring school climate? And are there clear school boundaries, rules, expectations? And then community assets, those are assets that are experienced in community settings other than school, okay? It's really important for us to see like what contexts are areas of strength? Because you can look at it, our like, this is where we can really build those developmental assets within our students. But it's also really important for us to see what contexts are areas of weakness and how can we help fill that gap for our students? So we can take a look at that data too. Last school year, we had three that fell in that vulnerable category and those were personal, school, and community. And we certainly didn't feel good about school being in the vulnerable category and our strengths were social and family. Those were the contexts that were really strong. This school year, we were able to push one of them, thank goodness, school from having a vulnerable, like a, being in the vulnerable category over here to the adequate category. And again, I'd like to highlight that every context category has grown. But our two lagging areas are community and personal. So we did do some brainstorming again with leadership in the student services team to kind of address and build those contexts for growth. Under personal, we'd really like to continue to provide our social emotional learning, um, curriculum for students. And right now, that second stuff, um, we're feeling like that work does a lot with character building. Um, and that is clearly a need for our students. We'd like to provide leadership opportunities that allow our students to be decision-makers, right? We wanna give them some autonomy and some control over what's happening in their lives. We wanna continue to celebrate our scholars. I also think it's important for you to know that our instructional strategy focus, and we talked about this at the last board meeting, is teacher clarity, right? We are modeling for our students every day. This is what you are learning. This is why it's important and this is how you'll know you've learned it, okay? That teacher clarity and that sense of purpose is a very important thing for us to model with our students and I think it aligns with this need as well. And then alignment of our educator effectiveness. When we are providing feedback to our teachers, one of the domains we're really focusing on are, do you have a positive classroom environment? Are you teaching student character traits and habits within your subject areas, within your classroom? And then strategies to build context for growth in the area of community. Again, we wanna seek opportunities to better engage the community at large. We felt really good about the spotlight event that happened. We felt really good about the STEAM event that happened here. Those opportunities brought people in. They brought in organizations from outside the school. And we see that it is an area of need and something we can do to really help make those connections. We'd like to utilize our communication tools to promote, promote more resources and programs for our students and their families. We want to continue to expand district-wide and school-wide family engagement activities. We see that as something really important. And then the neighborhood, because that fell under community. And there's like a dot, 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 because I see that as such a reciprocal relationship, right? Strong neighborhoods help build strong schools and strong schools help keep our neighborhood strong as well. And we wanna make sure we're doing what we can, right, to facilitate this relationship. We wanna be good neighbors.
Go ahead. No. I, um, I'm, I just wanna, I'm afraid, I'm gonna be a Debbie Downer.
You're okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you, the, go back to that slide where you separated the cohorts.
Yeah.
Like the twenty-one to, that one.
Yep.
No, wait.
Yep.
Is that the one?
Yep.
Yeah, so, this is my concern, like overall, when you aggregate the data, it looks like we did a little better. But when you disaggregate it like this, you can see in every cohort, our numbers actually get worse.
Yes.
It's just the eighth grade, which was awful, disappeared. So what I, what I observe is not improving.
Yeah.
I observed each of our class cohorts, except for fourth grade, we don't know yet, um, feeling worse this year than last year. That's not on your watch, right? But still, that, that's what speaks to me.
Yep.
That I, I don't feel good about this.
Yeah, no, and I felt like it was really important to put this, to put this in front of everybody, right?
So I think that's the message I take away from this. And I, I know you're trying to celebrate some growth, but to me, that growth looks like that really very challenged eighth grade cohort disappeared and that's why our numbers popped up. So I would, that's, I, I just want you to know, I'm not gonna be going and, you know, bad-mouthing anything. I'm just saying, I look at that and I'm like, oh, God, I'm glad we have a new, stronger SEL team built. And
Yep.
I anticipate, given all the hard work you're doing, that next year, we're gonna see improvement here. But this sure makes my heart ache when I look at that.
I think, and I think transparency is really important.
So I appreciate you doing this.
I feel like it's important to lay it out so people can see it clearly.
Yeah, so I, I just want you to know, I really appreciate you doing that. Um, and then I, I also wanted to say, I appreciate it. I was sitting here taking notes and I asked, as you were talking about looking for engagement of students, how are you gonna identify students who are less engaged? And, and you answered my question, cause you've got this challenge of waiting on teachers. So I'm glad you're thinking about ways to institutionalize the way to identify students.
Yeah, we wanna be more pro- Yeah, we want to be more proactive and more efficient at that. But that's going to pull, like, there's going to be a lift that comes from somebody in order to do that. And so that's a lot of what we're kind of working out as a leadership team.
Have you looked at these summary numbers without the eighth-grade cohort? Like, limited to?
Oh, like, can I pull this out?
Look at these numbers without the, take eighth grade out of the twenty-one results, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Take that out and then look at how we're doing.
I wonder if you could. I could ask that.
You know, it's just something to think about because of that breakdown data, what that looks like.
And then take out the K-five of this year.
Fourth grade.
Sorry, fourth.
Right, so you feel that it's just the kids we had last year.
Then you have a year-over-year view of how we're doing. I mean, I don't think it's a surprise, but.
I could call the DAP people.
But that's what I'm curious about.
They've been pretty good about getting back to me with questions for the most part. So I can call and ask.
That would be really interesting.
They'll probably charge money for that.
Oh, that's okay. But it would be really interesting to do that.
It's what's on my mind, just sharing that.
Yeah, I get it. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ben.
Okay, so real quick, the range of zero to thirty, is that because they, like, took the sum of certain questions, zero to four or something?
Yeah.
It was points?
Because it's breaking this number here is based on zero to sixty, because that's context plus the developmental assets put together.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And the developmental assets are pulled apart here.
Got it.
And then the context.
So it's possible that, like, some kids scored five and other kids scored thirty and you ended up taking the average of all these different. Okay, so is it possible to get, like, I mean, is this private? Is it possible to get a list of kids who scored ten or under? And those are kids that you really focused on?
We did talk about that. So we talked about using this as a screening tool to identify students that are in need, okay? It was a discussion we had. We just weren't sure, number one, how that was going to be perceived by families, because I had heard rumblings about parents not being happy about this survey being administered last school year. And we weren't sure if we were ready to do that quite yet. So I'm not sure how that would impact my results, because this right now is completely anonymous. So I have no student identifying information.
Got it.
Part of my wonder is, boy, we're having the students do it anyway. Could we use this as a screening tool and use that to help poll students that are in need? I think that would be something we'd have to discuss for next school year.
And we talked last year, because all the partner schools did it. We talked about that and we wondered if, at some point in the future, we might move towards that, to have in that list, but.
Once you start using it that way, students will get wind of that. And that's going to impact responses, especially for kids who are invading support that they need. You know, it's complicated.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
For what?
Who don't trust the person.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Chris, still in me, sorry. Let's keep it. Any other questions, Carla?
I did, thank you.
Brenda, any questions?
I just have a couple, I just want to understand logistically. So three hundred and forty-eight participants, so did some students, sorry, two eighty-nine after the error test. Did some students opt out or families opt out?
I had one family opt out.
So this is the totality of students?
Super disappointing, no. It is, so the percentage without scrubbing.
Right, three forty-eight.
It only identified, it only took sixty-nine percent of our student population.
So what were the other?
With the scrubbing, fifty-seven percent of our student population.
Is that better than last time?
No.
Not really.
Not really, right?
Not really, it's super frustrating. And I'm going to tell you, the Student Services team felt terrible. And I said, I will defend this team. I will lay down in front of you, because they took this very seriously. They went into every single classroom. They scheduled it with every single classroom teacher. They offered support for students who would need accommodations, reading and responding to the questions. They said, in one of the grade levels, I think it was fourth grade, they said it was like a nightmare. Like, they would go through all the questions and then they'd hit submit and they didn't even know if it had, like, fully submitted or not.
Oh, so it might be a technical problem.
It could have been, and we weren't sure if it was an issue with Wi-Fi here or was it an issue on DAP's end? I kind of want to call DAP and like, ask, like, is this common? Because we planned really hard so that we could get, like, a high response rate. And they didn't get it. They were super deflated by the number of responses.
And Kelly, we have a tech meeting next week because there were some issues with testing as well. So new lines coming in and we're going to look at all of our, because there's something.
They, like, the whole school did not take it at the same time. I mean, they scheduled individual classrooms, which you feel like Wi-Fi should be a scandal. But it's disappointing in terms of the response rate, because you feel like you're making kind of big decisions on this and you feel like, do we have all the data we should be having? I like being able to have an apples-to-apples comparison. I'd like to be able to administer this again next year, because I think it's a really nice way to look at the impact of our work.
The only other thing, like, it's a thought or a question, I don't know. So you said some students identified as not identified between male and female. Do they have other options on this survey?
Yes, so, yep.
Yeah, we had the option to do.
Hold on, let me pull it up. It's in my notes, hold on.
You knew I'd ask.
I asked, because we were kind of looking at the numbers together. Their options were male, female, transgender, male-to-female, transgender, female-to-male. So if they said.
Non-binary?
Non-binary was transgender, do not exclusively identify as male or female.
So that's not non-binary.
That may be your group of.
Non-identified?
And then did not answer was two.
So I guess my thought or thinking on this is, how inclusive is this survey? If one of the first questions I ask is, how do you identify? And I don't see myself in that list. And then I go on to take this test. And it's not surprising to me that positive identity is possibly something that gets flagged. So it makes me question the rest of the, you know, so that's just, it's just something to think about. And it doesn't ask about sexual orientation. Is that intentional? Is that, like, anyway, this could be a conversation for another time, but that's another area where you might be, like, you might be, have crosscategories of, you know, some of these assets needing to improve, so.
I agree.
I think the Youth Risk Assessment Survey, right? Isn't that the one the CDC says? I think that goes into, there's a long debate, right? Over whether we should be doing that one instead or in addition to that one.
But you like this, this particular survey, you feel like it's as.
I wanted to see how it stacked up against last school year.
Okay.
We, our partner schools are also administered the same survey. It's really nice to talk with our neighboring districts and see how our data compares. And we did compare our data.
Okay.
And we have similar trends.
With participation as well?
A little bit with participation, but I definitely feel like we got the lowest percentage of response, responses. But like, where our developmental asset strengths and weaknesses lie, we're pretty similar and our context strengths and weaknesses are also very similar.
Okay.
So I feel like, you know, this is work that we can't just do in one department. I feel like this is, like, this is really big work, so.
Okay, thanks. First things I like to do.
Yeah.
Five B, I'm so tired, I don't even remember what with my board agenda. Only thing is that, the only thing is, is the conference tomorrow. It's, I think Dan Velez sent a invite, if you want to go to his reception, to everyone. We also have an invite to, we also have an invite in our email from the superintendent. She's having, like, she has a.
Oh, the state superintendent?
The state superintendent, so I think that's all I have for board reports.
I thought you were going to have a slideshow.
No, I'm not. I'll never have a slideshow. Future board, our future agenda topics.
Why are you looking at me? I have nothing.
Future agenda topics from the audience. Zoom. Any future agenda topics? Next, visitor participation.
Effort is made.
You did.
You did.
You and Jean.
Jean has her hand raised.
Oh, sweet.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for listening. I appreciated what everyone said and just hearing about the district and appreciate all of your efforts.
Thanks, Jean. Anyone else?
And on a high note.
Seven A, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Carla, second by Ben. All in favor? Four to zero, Andy, and can you mark down when Andy had to leave? Thank you.